Good evening, please, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic by which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll all please remain standing, we have an invocation by our chaplain, Curtis Smith.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, honored guests, ladies and gentlemen of the community, let us pray. Lord, God of all creation, we come into your presence asking you to invoke the richness of your blessing upon this assembly on behalf of the great city of Santa Ana. For the leaders of our community, the city council, police and fire departments, for their extraordinary and outstanding contributions, we are grateful for their performance, for their faithful, unselfish service to the city, and especially to the residents. We pray for them, your continued blessing of providential leadership and divine direction in all future undertakings on behalf of the city and for the benefit of all Santa Ana citizens. We ask you to bless the honorable mayor and this council body as they conduct the very important business listed on the agenda, guide their actions that they will be positive and successful. May this council meeting, which was opened by being called to order, be conducted expeditiously with dignity and adjourned in harmony. We pray in the spirit of the Serenity Prayer, saying, "God, grant us the serenity to accept the things we cannot change, the courage to change the things we can, and the wisdom to know the difference." All of God's people said, "Amen."
Thank you very much. And we'll start with a public comment, and I have three requests to speak. If anybody would like to speak, please fill out a green form in the back of the room and hand it to the clerk. We'll start with Alfredo Amesqua.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and council members, city council members that are present, as well as the city manager and staff. First and foremost, I want to thank the opportunity to address the council on this specific occasion. It's been a long day for me, so I'm kind of unwinding for the day, but I want to share a couple of thoughts with you. First and foremost, I am very proud, and I want to say this openly, about the work that you guys have been doing in the last 12 months. I think this is, for the first time, one of the occasions where we actually have an increase of revenue, where we actually see some significant numbers that many of us have seen, many of us have been residents of the city for many, many, many years, and we finally are beginning to see what I would call the real direction and the prosperity of our city. So I want to thank you all, and thank you, the leadership of your city, for doing that. I also want to share with you that this is the first time I've seen this document, I didn't have a chance to look at it, but I want to share a couple of thoughts with you. I think the recommendations that are being proposed, I think, make a lot of sense. In fact, one of the things that I'd like to encourage the council is to continue working with the local community, continue working with the business persons of the city, to make sure that you guys have a check and balance system, so that, in fact, when you guys recommend certain things, we can either endorse them, or we can probably come back with some recommendations to you all. So I would make a recommendation to continue outreach for the business community and the general community. The second thing I want to share with you is that, for many, many, many years, many of us, including myself, have requested of this council, requested of the city manager, to make sure that we had a reserve, and I think we're finally beginning to see that reserve, something that I think many of us felt that, at one point, we could use that as a safety net, and so, thank you, all of you, for addressing that issue. The final comment that I want to make with you is this, is that, I don't know how many of you, many times, have recognized that this is a city who, many years ago, many, many years ago, we were about maybe 5% of Latino surname residents. Nowadays, if you begin to look at your neighbors, we have a very, very high increase of numbers, and we have a really diversified city. But one of the things that we have not addressed, and I would hope that perhaps during these discussions it can be addressed, I think we need some type of assistance to our individuals who ultimately will become citizens in this country. So I would urge this council to consider either establishing a position, perhaps out of the office of the city manager, to coordinate activities, to promote activities, and actually, perhaps even to develop activities that would help our residents to become permanent residents, to become citizens, to become individuals that would not only be providing the vote for our community, but also some increase of revenue. As you know, as our community begins to take ownership of this community, you'll see that community become more and more productive. So I would urge you, city council members, to consider the possibility of establishing a position that would coordinate those activities, or perhaps maybe give some thoughts to maybe a short, long-range study for those efforts, but I'd really like to see that this council takes into consideration, especially now that we have a little bit of a reserve, a little bit of funding, to establish that position. Many cities, as you all know, you know, your city manager probably understands and recognizes this effort, many cities that have a large population of Latino residents have undertaken this effort, and so I would urge you, city council members and city managers, to consider that recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now Francine Harris, please, followed by Darryl White.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Francine Harrison. I'm a longstanding member of the Santa Ana Senior Club at Birch Park, an active member, the president of the advisory board, the president of the senior club. I love helping and praying for people. I am here today to ask you to help the seniors at the center. We have been working with the park and recreation, encouraging them to help us to keep the park looking good. It's a historic park, and we would love to keep it in sanitary condition. The park is historic, and we would like to have a fence put around it, a historic fence to keep it beautiful, like, it's historic, and we would love the fence around it, a wrought-iron fence, and we would like to have it closed at the regular hour, 8:00 p.m., and open in the morning, at dawn. We see that, back on the east coast, they have many clean multi-sex restrooms at the park. This will help any brother and sister needing to use the restroom to do their business, instead of coming into the senior center to use our facility there. We need a clean place for them, a restroom put out there. We, with the help of the city employees, the seniors, we were able to raise $22,000 for this project, and what we need from the city council and the mayor is to commit to us $140,000 of the surplus money to this project, to make this dream come true. It is a win for you, our leaders, a win for the seniors from the center, and a win for anyone that visit Birch Park, a triple win for those that will visit. God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Darryl White?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. Again, my name's Darryl White. I'm here on behalf of the Riverview Neighborhood Park Association, which is up off of 21st and Bristol. First of all, I'd like to say thank you all, especially to the Parks Department for the recommendations that are contained in the agenda for tonight's meeting. After roughly looking through this for a few minutes, I see $126,000 of recommended repairs and improvements for our park. I greatly appreciate that. To them, thank you very much. I would just urge the council to further consider adding additional funds for Riverview, and doing even more than that, because the Parks and Recreations Department earlier recommended that there's over $1 million worth of repairs that need to happen at our park, just to raise it to the status quo. As I'm glancing through a lot of these suggestions and recommendations of what to do with these funds, these additional funds, we're adding to structures, we're adding new things, which are great, and I don't want to take away from that, but I think that it's an important value to maintain what we have in the existing infrastructure in our parks. By way of reminder, our park is used by pony baseball, so hundreds of families from all over the city come to use our park at Riverview every year, multiple times throughout the year. They're starting up fall ball here in a few, and there's one restroom that accommodates the hundreds of people that will come to our park, and that restroom is really run down. So I know you have a lot of very important matters to consider tonight. I just want to say thank you again for the progress, and please, you know, give us more funds. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, one more. Chris Schmidt. Seeing no Chris Schmidt, we'll move on. I'm just kidding, boy.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, City Council.
Go ahead, Chris.
I would just like to add on to what the gentleman before me just discussed. I know in the strategic plan, the city, one of the big things is we talk about our parks, and I've been working with several people within our Parks and Recs Department, Ron Ono, Gerardo Mowet, and Enrique Marbon. Just last week, at the skate park, there's about a four-foot section of metal pipe that's missing. It's very dangerous. I just had a brief chance to look over this. I really like some of the items listed for improving our Parks and Recs Department. One of the things I would like to address is, I constantly hear about how great business is going in Santa Ana, and just ensuring that we are backfilling some of the personnel the city let go years ago, when we had to make a lot of drastic cuts. We had 1,500 city employees at one time, we went back to 1,000. I hear about how the number of applicants for business licenses in Santa Ana has expanded greatly, but are we making sure there's enough code enforcement personnel to manage businesses?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. We have Cesar Placencia. Cesar's walking faster than Chris. Take your time, Cesar, and as soon as you start, the clerk will start the clock. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. I just want to say thank you. I was at the meeting last week, when it was brought up about the surplus, or not surplus, but extra money that was found, just to touch on what a couple of people attending here at the meeting said, it's great that you guys are looking into putting that money into the Parks and Recs, as I'm representing Santiago Little League, and at El Salvador Park. El Salvador Park is used for much more than just Santiago Little League, but also soccer leagues play there also. There's a lot of community outreach that goes on with churches and things like that, so our park gets used a lot. There's one restroom. Our fields are inadequate, our baseball fields, I mean, have been there since they were first put in, in the early '80s, so we would like to see new backstops and things like that. Just like Enrique Marbon knows about it, I don't have a dollar amount on it, but, you know, someone, if it's not Juan Lopez that comes out there, would see what needs to be repaired. Thank you for all your hard work, and just thank you.
Thank you, and that is the last speaker. So with that, let me bring our attention to the consent calendar. Are there any items that council members wish to pull or abstain on, on the consent calendar? I think we only have three items. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes six-zero. There's a request to excuse Councilmember Tina Hedo. This probably is going to be a long debate.
Second.
All right. We have two motions, no seconds. Those in favor, please say aye. Motion passes six-zero with one absent. So with that, let's go on to the resolutions here, I believe, for the business calendar. Madam Clerk, is that correct? I want to entertain a motion on item 50-5A. We have a motion by Councilmember Martinez, second by Ben Avita. Is those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 50-5B, an ability to get some money back for the city. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
We have two motions. Madam Clerk, you pick, either Sarmiento or Amesqua, you decide. They kind of said it at the same time. Ladies first. Oh, now she's got to change it. That's okay.
[laughing].
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. 60A. Let me turn things over to the city manager at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Polito, members of the city council. Mayor Protem, we'll go ahead and start the presentation. The overall goal today is to begin the discussion of the needs of the city as it relates to one-time expenses. Everything today is one-time, and we'll discuss that and begin the prioritization process, and also make sure that we do a quick overview of the charter requirements. We'll go ahead and discuss the agenda. We're going to try and go through this rapidly, Mayor and members of the city council. I'll take about five minutes. We'll talk about the schedule. We'll review your individual mayor and council member priorities. We'll talk about deferred maintenance, capital improvement, and vehicle replacement needs. And I want to emphasize, these are all identifying what we need. These are not recommendations from staff. We'll talk about our technology needs. We'll talk about the general plan, the branding, the metro planning, and then we hope that the majority of the time is spent by the mayor and council discussion among yourselves with priorities, and giving staff some preliminary discussion. Let me start out by saying thank you to the mayor and the council members for your faith and confidence in the city, and the residents, and the management, and the employees. We really believe that your leadership made the difference in arriving at today's surplus. We did have a forecast that was not positive. I think a lot of it had to do with some of the trends we experienced, some of the difficulties we faced, but we want you to know that we do have a positive forecast. None of these monies were found, by the way. You don't find these things, just like you don't lose them, so we had to work really hard. We passed the utility user tax. It was passed overwhelmingly. Again, thank you for your leadership. It was the fourth-largest generator, and we also have had good results in growing the tax base over the last three years, 8.8%. Mr. Amesqua mentioned the reserve level. It's a 20% reserve level, which is very, very, very high, at $45.3 million, and that allowed us to get very good interest rates and refinance for the first time in many years, and saved about $10 million. We hadn't renegotiated our revenue for the jail in eight years, and we did that successfully, took a team effort with the mayor and the council, and our federal lobbyist in DC, and our police chief and others, but we were able to get a 31% increase, about $8 million a year turnaround, so that was very beneficial. Next slide. We also had some savings. We haven't cut any programs, and we also want to emphasize that, in addition to today's surplus and last year's surplus, we've added about $20 million to our general fund, and so that's in addition to the surplus since 2014, and we are able to identify today at least $10 million. We hope it's more. I don't expect a great increase, but we said all along it would be between 10 and 12 million dollars, so hopefully we land somewhere in the middle, but we believe $10 million is the place. This is our forecast that was approved in February. The caution I did at the time, although not a lot of people believed it, but I thought that the only concern I have is it was too conservative, and I was worried that we would do better. In fact, we did, and the star there is a blue star, it should be a gold star, but we actually achieved $217 million versus 208.9. Next slide. And this is how we got there, very specifically. We overachieved in our revenue. We managed our expenses very well. We took that surplus, the majority of it went to funded reserve. That was the first priority established by the council, and then we took $2 million of that money and allocated for different items, $750,000 for the general plan. We didn't use that money. We spent about 150 in the budget, but it rolled over to this year. It's available now to use. Community development block grants, $340,000. The good news there is that's in our base budget, so that's forever. It's 340 last year, 340 this year, 340 in the future, so that was a great commitment on the part of the city council. Some money for assessments. We redid the council chambers, $300,000, and we're ongoing with an economic development plan, which is very important, for 250. We had more accomplishments. I'll go through them quickly. We made significant progress in our strategic plan. We added $3 million for over five years, $15 million. It says five years, but that's in our base budget, so that definitely is sustainable. We regenerated a very healthy legislative agenda. I want to thank our legislative committee for that, but we got about $14 million in grant funding, so that helped a lot, including police officers. We've added over 80 positions in the last two years. We just had a trial budget that was focused on ongoing expenses, some one-time, but ongoing. And next slide. And so we added some items related to dispensaries, and we did lots of outreach to the community. It was very important. We had hundreds of people participate, and our new budget is $225 million for this fiscal year, as opposed to 205 two years ago, so it's about a $20 million a year increase, as I mentioned before. We're very fortunate to provide pension cost increases that were borne by the city. And I want to mention this, Mayor, members of the council, because this is an issue of nationwide interest, but two years ago, our pension costs were 11%. This year, our pension costs are 11%, so it's not growing. That's a very healthy sign that we manage our pension costs very well. And we also were able to provide increases for our employees, 200.5% this year and next year, healthcare increases, so we had a very good package, and we have had no cuts to programs or services. More innovation and efficiencies. We were able to save $10 million refinancing our debt. We had excellent water and sewer rates in terms of the increases, but also the refinancing. I mentioned the jail operations. All of our services were provided on the first floor. We added receptionists. We added new amenities. We added Wi-Fi. We bought new furniture. We're doing some things online, so we have a better customer experience on the first floor. And we have a receivership program, which is really good, related to code enforcement, new kiosks, some online applications, and we're in the midst of developing an information technology master plan. So we had a successful budget year. I was very happy with that. I'm really thankful to the council. However, we have a surplus now, and according to the charter, we need a supermajority to approve whatever the recommendations are as part of this discussion for the 10 million or 11 million, so it's very important we have a consensus, because we need five votes to move forward. Next slide. And how did we get there this year? As I mentioned earlier, we did much better in our revenue. We managed our costs very well. We were able to fill all our positions. They're listed there in terms of some of the things we did. So when you look at the total, two years, it adds up to about $25 million. Next slide. And now I'm going to introduce Francisco Guitierrez, who's going to talk about the schedule very briefly.
So I want to go over the allocation schedule and rationale behind the process as we go through the discussion on the surplus. So we operate, in accordance to our accounting principles, on an accrual basis, so we're still determining our final revenues and expenditures. Any revenues that were assigned for April, May, and June are still being recovered through July and August. Part of the issue is, for example, the Board of Equalization releases all its sales tax allocations for those months in July and August. In addition, we're also looking at our expenditures, and any expenditures that were, in essence, done back in the fiscal year, as we pay the invoices, we have to accrue them back to that fiscal year. So as of now, by September, we should make a final determination of all our expenditures, and then have a preliminary surplus amount that we can determine. Basically, right now, we're projecting about $10 million, but it may be more based on the numbers that come in. By October, we should have final adjustments, which are finalized and posted, and obviously we would be able to bring back to council an item that would approve the final surplus funds. By December, our auditors would have come in and analyzed all our numbers and provide us a final audit opinion, which would then basically give us a final number that, at this point, could be more than $10 million. So here's our schedule that coincides with the events and tasks that we would be performing, obviously, in August, and we would be accruing all our revenue and expenditures. At the same time, we're having the discussion in terms of the surplus. And September would be the second final surplus discussion. We would have basically accounted for all our expenditures. By October, the council will have approved the surplus allocation, and we would bring back that amount back to the city council for approval. And then by December, we would have determined any final balances, and any balances that exceed the $10 million allocation could then be appropriated in December as well. So that would be the next steps for allocation.
Mayor, members of the city council, I am here to present to you the review of the individual mayor and council member priorities. This was based on the discussions and correspondence with the city manager. The items were categorized into two sections, items that were requested, specifically requested items, and then additional requests if there were additional funds available. They were categorized into the various departments where they would fall under. So here we have some of those expenditures, or some of those requests. Categorized all three of these under Community Development Agency as additional requests. We first see that economic development should incorporate at a Shop Santa Ana program, encouraged by providing a 10% redemption card to residents. The second item is that our economic development should have a component addressing the homelessness issue. The third is exploring how the city can position itself to take advantage of the economic rebound. So these items, depending on the council priorities and how much funding would be allocated to those, could be anywhere between $100,000 and, sky's the limit, just depending on what the council's priority is. Yes?
Can you explain again what the additional, the type of request, how that helps you find additional persons? What are the different categories?
The two categories, well, there's one nuance to that. So a requested item would be an item that is specifically requested, for example, $100,000 for X Park to replace swings. That's a specific request. The other category, additional, would be, okay, if we fund these requested items, these are additional items of interest, maybe not necessarily, they could be allocated by the council at this point, or not, but that's up to the mayor and city council to determine. So it's just a prioritization amongst the council when the priorities were given to the council, that initial discussion.
These were not all just general requests, ideas that council members made? There was a, the way you're lining them up, or laying them out here, there were some that were specific to, with dollars attached? Is that what you're saying?
Some do, and for items where staff could identify cost upfront, and you'll see that in a couple slides, where we can quantify some numbers now. If, for example, let's say that economic development should have a component addressing homelessness issue. If the mayor and city council wanted to allocate $1 million to that effort, then we would go back and identify what go back and identify what is that comprised of? How much of that is staff? How much of it is a facility? And various items like that. Where we couldn't come up with a number, there is no number assigned to it. Now, some of the requests from the mayor and city council did have a number attached to it, where they requested a specific dollar amount, and we did include that, as you'll see shortly.
Thank you.
Here are the items that are under the city manager's office. So another good example would be the gap funding for the Standard McFadden lot. If we did do a land swap there for a different parcel that the city owns, we need to determine what the fair market value is and then determine what that gap funding would be. There is going to be a tentative meeting later this week, so we'll have that number. If that is a council priority, we will have that number available. Same thing with Willowick Golf Course. We can explore opportunities. Part of that would be the acquisition, if that is the direction of the council, and then the city manager would proceed with how we move forward. We do also have the revisiting of deferred maintenance and capital projects through the percent of budget strategy. That would be similar to other cities' models, so we would just do that based on a percentage of the budget. An additional request was received for a homeless shelter, so the pursuit of a permanent homeless shelter in the city. The last item is one of those other nuances, which is the council action, the wellness strategies, the signage for Plaza Calle Cuatro and the Calle Cuatro Street signs. It's estimated, right now, we have a rough budget number of $25,000 in order to have those signs made and installed. So that would be an item that we would be requesting from the council. In the planning and building agency, we do have the completion of the general plan within two years. Staff has identified approximately $2 million in cost, and that includes staff time as well as consultant time.
Just very quickly on the general plan, because that was my request. Of that 2 million, we did allocate, we had 750,000. It was rolled over. And how many, how much money did we also allocate in this fiscal budget? Right, it's minus the 2 million, so what would that be? It's not very clear, so I need to know how much we need to allocate today. Is it 2 million or is it less than 750 plus the additional money that's in the budget?
It's, we have 150,000 in the budget, comes from Martinez on an ongoing basis. And so if you wanted to do 2 million, you'd have to do the balance, it'd be 1,850,000.
1,850,000, okay. So what happened to the 750,000, the 750 that you told us it was rolled over? What happened to that?
So that money wasn't spent, so it was unencumbered.
So it's in this part of the surplus?
Per surplus.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. So it's really not 1.8, because the 750 we were going to reallocate anyhow to the general plan, but I understand what you mean. Thank you.
And we don't have to make a decision today?
Yes.
The completion of the Metro East Extension to Grand, to the five freeway, that study would be approximately $100,000. Development of a branding and visioning concept that was requested at $250,000, so that's a specific request. All of these items as well, under Parks and Recreation, and this is on a couple of slides, also include requests. Extending the bike trail, that's design. Ensuring park maintenance with River View as identified, $96,000. Complete and finished Santiago Creek. The actual completion of that would have to include construction costs. So at this current time, we don't have a specific number, but we can, if that is a priority, we can come back and develop the specific costs.
That one was mine. I do want to at least focus on a feasibility study, because I think this is something that's been an issue for a very long time, and we've never actually asked staff to come up and give us a study and let us know what our options are. So for me, more than anything, I'd like to see a study to see what our options are regarding the creek. Thank you.
Another request was the development of seven joint-use agreements with the school district for fields in the classrooms. The request specifically was 500,000 to start the program with a total target of 3 to 4 million. Exploring the addition of two additional clay courts at the Cabrillo Tennis Center, approximately $400,000 is what it would take. And then would like to ensure that all parks receive some level of deferred maintenance. I didn't put a specific dollar amount there, because Gerardo, in his presentation, will outline his recommendations for how that's addressed. And here are some additional requests related to parks and recs, identifying that parks with no restroom facilities, that we provide criteria for including those. The development of the criteria will then give us a budget number, so then we can come back in September with a specific number. Development and identification of city assets for repurposing where residents can gather, that was a specific request of 500,000. Considering that community projects require minimal space and cost for development, such as skate parks, once we know, is it a skate park and how many, we can definitely come back with a number for those items, especially if we have any acquisition costs associated with that. Would like to extend the number of kids participating to the Catalina trip. As long as we have a number of how many, we can, we have the numbers, we can very easily come up with that cost, so it's just a per-student cost. Supportive of a joint-use program, here again, would be 2 to 3 million, depending on how that's done. Out of our Public Works Agency, one of the requested items was improved directional signage as well as enhanced monument signs at city boundaries. Depending on size and scale, that definitely can be requested, and we can bring that back to the mayor and city council. Evaluating the civil service process, some of those items will not require many costs, others will. So once we determine this as a council priority, we can work with the personnel director and come back with a recommendation on what that specific cost is going to be. Ensuring that funds to support the South Main efforts in the areas of aesthetics, lamps, benches, trash receptacles, and archways. Again, size, scale, we can definitely bring those numbers back. Supportive of the implementation of the body camera program, it's noted as 1.3 million over five years. However, that's equipment only. The total cost is closer to 2.5, and that is going to have staff time associated with that as well. So the 1.3...
What about the maintenance? How about, is the maintenance included?
The maintenance for...
The software is all...
The software is, in this number.
In that number, okay, great, thank you.
Correct, but not the staff time for custodians, the records keepers for that.
And have we figured out a way how we're going to store this information, do a cloud meeting with our new consultants, how we're going to be able to gather and separate that information and how it's going to be accessible? That's probably going to cost more money. I'm not sure if we thought into that process as well?
Cloud is one of the options.
Cloud is one of the options. Okay, great, thank you.
And that is it for the individual council requests. I will note that throughout the conversation, we do have two of our staff members who will be taking notes, as well as the minutes that we'll have. So as you have additional requests, we will be capturing those as we go through the meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gerardo Moet.
Before we leave this, are there any questions, any thoughts on what we were just presented?
Yeah, well, I wanted to actually add a couple items, and I think since we have momentum now, we actually have the council speaking, that I think it would be in the best interest that the council provide its input and its priorities and then...
What would you like to add?
Then allow staff to give presentations afterwards.
So you want to, right now, stop their presentations?
Pretty much, yes. I would like to, you know, turn it around and let the city council give...
Why don't we do that soon, but we all have a lot of interest in deferred maintenance as relates to the parks. And Gerardo's up, and he's ready to go. So let's let him do that, and then let's figure out if that's a good moment to stop. Please, Gerardo, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
I want to add my items to the list there.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Just after this, I'll bring it in.
Thank you for this historic, we're good to go. Thank you for this historic opportunity to share the list of unfunded park improvement projects. Because of budget limitations, as you all know, in the last 25 years, there was little opportunity to invest in parks, recreation, and library facilities in accordance to the need. I'm excited about this opportunity. Our park and recreation facilities are managed by six areas, as shown in the map, which is the same boundaries as the six city wards. Each area has community service supervisors that oversee communications with park users. Each supervisor is conducting their area outreach meetings to get feedback from the public on the projects you will be reviewing today. Area five and area six have conducted their outreach meetings already, and library staff conducted a public outreach meeting earlier this month for the Agua project that I'll describe in a bit, which is an educational water conservation project by the main library. The remaining four area public outreach meetings are being scheduled and will be completed by your second council meeting in September. Also, these projects and feedback forum on the projects has been placed online to continue getting feedback from the public on these projects to help with the discussion. Our park design and maintenance staff, Ron Ono right now is visiting his 90-year-old mom in Hawaii, but a lot of this work is on his shoulders and his team. And recreation professionals created this list of unfunded park improvement projects that is funded, that if funded, can be addressed this fiscal year. We categorize the projects by area, by priority functions, and by area. The first function that you see, or the first bucket, if you will, is basic, which will enhance safety of the parks. That totals to 3.3 million dollars, and I will share with you briefly each item in the list. The second category totals 12.8 million, and it's the list of projects that will be, that will add functional value to the park sites. This will make our parks work better. I will review each item in this category. And the third and final category is sustainable, which totals $765,000, which are the items that will add life to the facility despite the wear and tear. So this is the first slide that specifies specific park projects. This is basic, safety first. And in area one, we walk, walkways in parks and security lightings are important to prevent trips and falls and to make sure parks are safe in the evening. Similarly, we have basketball court renovations and parking lot renovations that are unsafe and need repairs. Finally, we have playground equipment that needs replacement to enhance safety for the children. Listed here in area one, you have these types of projects at Lily King and Madison Park in area two. And in area two, you also have the walkway that needs repair. And in area three, you have several projects, Fisher Park, security lights, River View, as you can see, the court and basketball court renovation and the parking lot renovation, and Santiago Park, the bike trail resurfacing, and the security lights and play equipment. Then on the next slide, the continuation of the safety category. In area four, we have security lights for BOMO and Thornton Park parking lot renovation, and BOMO Coral Walkways and the Kiwanis Barrier Free Playground at Thornton Park. We have a need for...
Gerardo, can I ask you?
Yes, please.
Just interrupt you a quick question on the previous slide, if you can go back, just to get an idea, just so we understand. When you're talking about basic safety first, are you talking about preventing or improving equipment that's been damaged or in disrepair? Is that, is that what you're referring to? Or you're not talking about new equipment, right?
At times, it's new equipment is replacing a slide that has a hole that we can't just repair, and it's, and it's, right now, we have it boarded up, because people will hurt themselves. So it's a safety issue or no slide, that kind of a thing, trip and fall kinds of things. So these are things that staff has identified as, as we need to fix them, and it will increase our ability to manage risk.
So it could, it could include rehabbing or possibly new equipment to replace the existing equipment that's already damaged?
That's correct.
And that figure for, let's just, as an example, for area three at Santiago Park, you're talking about play equipment that is either going to be repaired or replaced at 230,000, just for one park?
That's right. The playground, we're speaking about the playground equipment that is within walking distance to Discovery Science Center. It's like significantly old, and there's a lot of splinter issues.
It's a big number.
And...
Before you continue on that one, you're talking about things like the big, long slides at the end by the arch area?
Those have been repaired lately, so those are fine right now. That one in particular is the playground within walking distance to Discovery Science Center where the restrooms are.
Close to the cabin?
Yeah, I'm sorry?
Close to the cabin area?
Yes, close to the cabin. That recently burned. The roof burned. We're replacing it.
I like the way you added that, as we're talking about it, talking about deferred maintenance. Let me just ask you a question. The slide on the right?
Yes, sir.
Can you see it?
Yes.
You can also look right behind you, because we got, we got a screen back there. But anyways, the slide on the right, Gerardo, putting that back up can't be that expensive. Would you agree?
Yes, that's, that's to symbolize the need of various other examples of playground equipment.
No, and I understand that, but if we were to fix all those that fall within that category...
Yes.
A lot of kids would be able to play.
Yes.
And it wouldn't be unsafe. I mean, it just wear and tear, and, you know, something got loose and it fell. Couldn't we fix all of those without a big dollar amount?
We do that three to five times a week with our seven general maintenance worker staff. That's what they do, is they do that. There are things that you need to go buy and replace.
But you put this as part of our overall examples of a park improvement plan.
Yes.
Could we put more money to just make sure we don't have that category? Because I can't imagine that that's real expensive, but a lot of kids are impacted by that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, throughout the presentation, you're going to see the, all those examples with dollar amounts for more money in many of these areas, in playgrounds and lots of...
Well, I just want a category that says, simple to fix. I mean, look, my kid's a little older now, but I used to go a lot to the parks. Sometimes there'd be like a swing...
That's right.
With a chain that's broken.
Yeah, yeah.
And now everybody looks at the swing, nobody can swing. I just want to figure out, what is a dollar amount to fix the broken chains out there?
Ongoing capacity on a day-to-day basis, to be able to repair things, that is in the base budget. This is the opportunity to fix things that needed to be fixed for years and years, that need, so the, for example, in the fiscal year budget, if one wanted to have a better capacity to quick, more quickly repair swings when there'd be call or whatever, you would end up adding more staffing, general maintenance worker staffing. Those are the skilled tradespeople that fix the parks.
Right now, what's our turnaround? That picture on the right, how long would it be that way with our current system?
You know, if it's a high priority, they would do it within two days. They will go down there. They would have to then stop. It's triage. They would stop whatever they were working on to fix something.
Look, I don't want to dwell long on this necessarily, but I just think that there's efficient areas where we can not spend a lot of money and give a lot of yield.
Yes.
And we ought to attempt that.
Yes.
You know, we ought to attempt that, and not necessarily say, well, we need a whole new playground, you know?
We do, we do need, we have 42 parks. We do need a whole new playgrounds.
And I'm not saying we don't, you know, I know we have 42, but what I'm saying is, I think we should prioritize deferred maintenance as it relates to just keeping up the equipment, because we get a lot of wear and tear on our parks.
Well, I'm, I'm really proud of the staff. They really work hard, and they are able to do what they can with the numbers that they have.
All right, let's continue, but let's just try to keep that theme, and let's see how many more pictures you show us that can be, that are what I call quick fixes.
Mayor Protam, was your question answered?
It was.
Okay. I think we are in this slide here, which is basic function. Area four, I had, again, these are items, these are projects that, for example, I already talked about, area four, and then Angels Park, which is within walking distance here. The restroom needs renovation. And the Centennial, Hardscape, recently, you were all brought to your attention about the lighting issue at Centennial Park. You can see, those are big numbers, and there's a significant need. There's no repairing, you actually see a picture there of one of the lights at Centennial Park. There's no repairing of that. Those things are close to falling, so we need to replace them. And Heritage Park needs improved, $50,000 worth of security lighting.
Did former Mayor Protam Alvarez, is that the one she pushes around, or is that a different light?
She did state that she did push a light pole. I don't know if that's the one, though.
All right, thank you.
Santa Anita Park, a very important park. Windsor Park, the security lights, $50,000. And very, very important for our soccer-playing community. You approved the, over 10 years ago, the installation of the synthetic field in Field Two within the Danyang Soccer Complex. The 10-year warranty has passed. There are holes and patches, and we need $640,000, because it is, it is a hazard to be playing when there are tripping obstacles in that synthetic field, and it's 640,000. Add totals to 3,282,200 in the bucket that is called basic or safety first.
Can you keep rolling? Some of, I'm hearing people saying, big picture. I know what that side of the room is like, but over here, they want big picture. Keep going.
And functional, the funding projects in this category is called functional, and many of the listed items in council priorities that Jorge just brought up are listed here. For example, there was, in area one, we have the Cabrillo Clay Courts at the, for the Cabrillo Tennis Center for $400,000. Cabrillo Park Tennis, across the street, there's a tennis court that needs to be renovated, 75,000. Sandpoint Security Lights, that's area one. And area two, Memorial Swim Pool, Memorial Rec Center. There's a lot of interest in a skate park. Our recommendation would be Memorial Park, because it's not a takeaway of any existing land, and there's enough buffer there. But if you're going to do a skate park at Memorial, it'll cost 800,000. You really need to go inside to the Memorial Rec Center and realize that that center needs to be replaced. In our conversations with the neighborhood association, they tend to agree. The Birch Restroom and Fence was the issue that was brought up by the senior. Over a year now, the seniors have been talking about that, and there is, we are able to manage that project with 140,000. There was brought to the attention by council, the op... There was, brought to the attention by council, the opportunity of buying additional land from the successor agency. There's a, on Lacy and Vance and Lacy and Sixth Street, the property, the Sixth Street property, those are the three parcels, the three homes. And, and you need to reimburse the, the agency, successor agency, and those are the dollar figures under area two. In area three, we have projects for Cesar Chavez Court Renovation, Morrison Court, Basketball Court Resurfacing, River View Site Furniture for the parking, for the park, Rosita Swimming Pool Deck, Santiago Bike Trail Planning, Councilwoman Amesqua, that is what you made reference a little while ago. 50,000 would begin the design for options. Santiago Park Gas House Landscape, that is the dirt area, the dirt area that many of you have brought to our attention in the public that is between Discovery Science Center and the lawn bowling clubhouse. It really is a nuggly piece of dirt that has been needing repair. For the next, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilor Martinez.
Hidardo and maybe our city manager here. Look, I, I think it's all our top priority here to fix these park improvements. We certainly don't have $16 million today in surplus money or where all that surplus money that we have today will be going to park maintenance. That's obvious, because there was various priorities from the council that didn't just focus on this. So I think this is a policy decision. If we want to dedicate, you know, getting a reserve to fill, to fulfill this within the next five years and make sure we complete this, what that number would be, as I've talked before in the past in, in my FedTech, creating a capital reserve, you know, for that amount to, to make sure that we fulfill, not only within Hidardo's Parks and Rec, it's 16, 16, you know, million dollars, but if you go into, you know, Public Works and our other city facilities, you're talking a lot of money here. And so we're not going to have, you know, those dollars here today. And so I appreciate the conversation. We understand the need, but I think based on the conversations that this city council has had and the public, you know, there are certain items that we want to, to address with deferred maintenance here today that, that we have within our surplus. We don't have all this money that you guys are discussing here today. And so we need a pinpoint exactly what we're going to be able to allocate so that we can help out and then set a policy to do a capital reserve, whether it be that 10% to fulfill the, that amount within three to five years to make, take care of all of this, all these issues.
Any thoughts from our city manager?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. These are the issues that have been presented to me by council members. The, a lot of them, yeah. Yeah, the skate park is one of them, the McFadden Lot, this is what the council's asking for, the mayor said. So we need to, I, I agree that we don't have enough money to fund them all, but I don't think we should dismiss the whole, the whole bucket of items with the hope that we're going to have money in the next five years, because I think that we have a lot of money available and we could probably have some more. So I think the council should give us policy direction on these items. You don't have to do all of them.
If we were to prioritize, you're thinking three to six, eight million, somewhere in that range?
Yeah, absolutely. We can do a lot and, and I, I recommend that you tell us of the items here, which ones are important at some point, so that we can say, McFadden, Skate Park, a River View. We're hearing from the council that you want some of these things now.
And we, and we do, and we do, but can't do it all at once, but, but we do.
Do you think a good start would be just the basic, because that's safety?
Yes.
To start with just the basic?
Absolutely.
All right, Hidardo, continue, but give us overview.
This slide is, to finish the, the three remaining areas and the functional, the Jerome and BOMO. BOMO, recently, there were a couple of you and the city manager that met with the neighborhood association at BOMO, and it was clear that there was an express need for a restroom. BOMO doesn't have a restroom. And El Salvador, there was a recent meeting with the Otisha Pilar and there's consensus on those projects. The stadium, one of these days, we have to think about the locker room facility at the stadium. It's in terrible conditions. I know that's a big number, but that's to renovate the locker room. And then I'm skipping over to area six. The Awa Improvement Project is 100,000. That, there's about 40 people that attended a meeting on this concept for a demonstration, drought-tolerant garden in front of, by the library. That was very positive. We've been working with Public Works. That's not a high-cost item and it's an educational item, given the water crisis that we have right now. And there's a lot of enthusiasm on that. And then the one that I want to point out is the Godinez Synthetic Turf, because now city council has been, the Prey Council Committee has been discussing with the district for over a year now about partnering and converting, and you'll see in the visual aerial map, converting the Godinez football field and track to a synthetic field and rubberized track. And in fact, it's going to be talked about at next Monday's district joint policy meeting. The idea would be to go 50/50. The, the, the city council has already identified the adult soccer surcharge, which is a little less than half a million, but close to that. So 25% is already identified. The total project for that, to rubberize the track and the synthetic field is 2 million. That means that we would have to come up with, with a million. And so in order to add to the soccer surcharge, we would need 525,000 in order to be able to do a $2 million project, because we already have the other 25%. And then the, there's a tennis court at Windsor Park that you cannot play tennis, because it needs repair. And then I won't go through the list of the sustainable, because those are more like wise investment, wear and tear. If you fix them now, you won't have to spend a lot more money later. And that totals to 765,000 of the, the, of the buckets.
One last comment, Mayor, if I could, just to encourage and ask for some patience. We also have a likelihood on Bristol Street, there are some parcels that people have come to us asking to buy. And unlike some of the parcels that were acquired with OCTA money, they were acquired with CBG money. And it's in millions of dollars. CBG can be used for some of these projects, so that could generate three, four, or five million dollars. And also, the council approved a credit rating for Moody's and S&amp;P, and we have a very high reserve. We can do some sensitivity analysis, and if they determine that a 15% reserve keeps our, our credit rating, then that's another $10 million. Pretty soon, if we all work together, everything gets funded.
Look, I'd be in favor of trying to figure out, how can we do a lot of this? Because we have a lot of need and it's tough for us to say, "Do this neighborhood and not that neighborhood." I think we should do all that we can. What I would suggest on the, on, on the short-term basis, maybe we do something like what we do with the block rents, where now we all kind of look at this and every council member come back, talk to the city manager, and then he kind of tries to, you know, come up with, with an immediate or more of a short-term plan. But I do like the idea of, look, if we can get aggressive with some of the things you mentioned and really take care of it, boy, wouldn't it be great if every kid in Santa Ana went to a local park and, you know, had nice facilities? We're all for that. So, so should we move on to the next item, Hidardo?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Hidardo. And thank you, look, I know you have a lot of energy, you have a lot of passion here. Just know, we all appreciate it and you're making a difference, Hidardo. Thank you. So with that, who would be next? By the way, Fred, I asked him earlier today about his last name, because it ends with P-O-U-R, and that sounds like, like, like poor in French, supposé français. But turns out that it means something different in Farsi. So can you just start your presentation with your name, Fred?
Sure.
What does that mean in Farsi, P-O-U-R?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. That means son of. So Musavi poor means son of Musavi.
Beautiful, see? Learned something here today. Please continue, Fred.
Thank you very much. My presentation would be much simpler. We got, we got, we got three, three categories, and all three categories, we have almost the same items. We need money for SAMSA, which is a safety, safe mobility, Santa Ana. We need money for essential deferred maintenance at train station, SARTIC. We need some GIS money, asset management and alley restoration, and also street medians that is turning yellow as a result of drought conservation. On the safe mobility, you're familiar with that. We're doing a study. We need millions of dollars to do that. The, the ultimate goal is to achieve zero fatal, fatality involving bicycle and pedestrians. We need to minimize and reverse the collision patterns that exist right now in the city. Any money that can be allocated in this area would be a seed money that we can use and start the program moving forward. SARTIC, the train station, major deferred maintenance at train station. We need four and a half million dollars to do the essential deferred maintenance at the station. As a result of this condition, we got 76% vacancy rate on the first floor. We are, our rents are $1.67 on the average, in opposed to $2.75 market range. So we're losing money as a result of this. If we get any money somewhere between two to four and a half million dollars to do that, we can, our goal is to have this as a landmark transportation center.
Fred, just want to add Mayor Protam to the council. Go back to the slide earlier, where it talks about the rents there. So if we go to a rent that is just about market, generates over $400,000 a year. And with that $400,000 a year, we can pay for the $4 million. So we could actually make the investment, get it back in rent, and this could be cost-neutral.
Well, that's one of the things, I, I'm glad you interrupted us for that, is that as we look at these and the investments that we're looking at making, because they are one-time monies, we should look at monies that we can allocate that are going to generate more money for us. And I think that's what you're talking about. I mean, I know we've had the conversation about bonding on money that we already have in our reserves, but if we can focus in on that, it just, I guess exponentially grows the, you know, one-time monies that we have, but we just continue, you know, doing more with less, so.
Yes, Mayor Protam, that's one of those projects. As I said, we would like to have a professional management down there. We want to, we want to fill in this space. We want to capture that $420,000 annually we're using, we're losing. One of our goal is right now to, to generate a bike, bike, bike share station. We want to put a zip car there. We want to improve the, the parking lot. Most importantly, we want to make this center, center self-sustainable in terms of, in financial aspect. We can do that if we have this initial investment at this very critical location.
Just very quickly, Fred, I was just at Arctic the other day as I took the train and I stopped there just to, you know, you know, because it's so fancy, you know, you just want to just find yourself through there. And look, as I've been at the, you know, the horrible station in Irvine, because it's not even a station, the station in, in, in Tustin is not even a station, and you come to, then you come to the stop in Santa Ana. And hey, we have an historic, beautiful-
Yep.
... regional transportation center that we have let fall apart and we, that, that should be our pride and joy. When we talk about transportation and people coming into our city, there's, there's thousands and thousands of people that are going to this, that are taking the train, they're coming here, and they're having to use our facilities like this, nor do we even have the other amenities that are required to compete now with Arctic. And Arctic is a state-of-the-art, over-the-top facility. Certainly, we're never going to get there, but we need to make investments that are going to give us a hu, a huge return. And I believe that the Santa Ana Regional Transportation Center, we need to put the money in so that we can get a bigger investment in, in the long run and making sure that it's sustainable.
And Michelle, if I may, especially with a streetcar coming, and it is coming, this becomes a pivotal station, a pivotal point, where more and more people are going to see it and, and participate. Please continue, Fred.
Thank you. The GIS system, this is kind of off the top. We, we were discussing this with, with David and also Hassan, and in our experience, we have never seen a, a city of this size having such a substandard GIS system. It is very important for us to keep inventory of infrastructure, have an ability to use census data, zoning information, and all of this necessary data we need in our day-to-day decision-making in order for us to make the process more efficient. We, you know, $225,000 that would get us going with, with the essential software that we need, we have in our budget to have expertise in this field in the Public Works Department. Asset management is also part of the strategic IT plan. This is related to, the smaller version of that, Public Works site, we, we identify our needs, we have plans, we have designs. We need this system to be able to move the project forward, to plan, budget, schedule, and maintain repairs and replacement of our facilities. Residential alleys, we have no budget at this point to upgrade residential alleys, to bring it back to what's, what was its intended use. Any dedication of money in this area would, would help. We can prioritize these alleys and we start spending money to, to improve the vast alleys we have within the city.
... such as, you know, moving forward with place making, you know, how many of the alleyways have we-
Make your mics off.
Have we identified specifically that are, you know, not in disrepair, but are, that would be able to be utilized, you know, putting, you know, you know, benches, trash receptors, nice areas where people actually can walk through. Right now, they're, they're not being utilized and we should be able to, to, to utilize them. There's one example in our downtown where we could actually put a skate park through the parking structure, and there's been discussions about that as well. And so, again, place making, repurposing alleyways that haven't been utilized. If we can identify the ones that are ready to go, I know there's many that are in total disrepair, but the ones that are ready to go, how can we continue to beautify them? If you could identify those, that would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely. And the last one is the street medians. We're all familiar with that. No longer, the green grass would be in the, in feasible features for our medians. Sooner or later, we have to replace all of it. It's, it's essential aesthetic feature of our, our streets. The council generously allowed us to borrow $5 million to replace the, some of these medians, critical medians to, to drought tolerant. Total cost of transformation would be 15 million. We have 5 million and deficit of 10 million to finish the rest of the work. With that, I conclude my presentation.
Well, look, in the interim, I told the governor, it's important that we don't frown Thank you. So with that, Hidardo, are you back?
No. Hidardo's over there.
Hidardo's over there. So Fran, you're back.
Yes, I'm back.
So is, is that mean Hidardo's going to come back too?
I don't know.
We, we will. If, if everybody gets two shots, Hidardo, you'll get two shots. Michelle said no. Fran, you're getting two shots, so make this one brief, I guess.
I'm presenting the deferred capital maintenance for the facilities as well as the vehicle equipment and items for the, for the city of Santa Ana. Now, how we looked at it, we looked at our facilities in terms of safety, liability and functionality. And how we prioritize the first one is we looked at systems that were actually failing. And most of the cases that you will see, we, anything that pretty much is leaking or, and especially our air systems, our hair, our cooling and, and heating systems, there, most of them are failing. So for example, our corporate yard, the roof restoration is important, only because, you know, obviously, we house employees and a lot of assets at the corporate yard. The Grand Central Chiller Replacement, that has in essence failed. That is going to be a major liability to the city. Fred has identified a lot of the deferred maintenance at the train station. Our building superintendent would like to replace our air handler right away, as well as work on the public restrooms in terms of the ADA upgrade. The vehicle wash facility at the corporate yard has failed. It only recycles right now 5% of used water. With the new system, it can recycle up to 70% of the water. The police, this facility, the Police Administration and Jail Facility, although it looks nice from the outside, it's a 25-year-old building and a lot of its systems are beginning to fail. More so, for example, the replacement of domestic water lines, which causes major leaks in the facility. That needs to be replaced. In terms of the Ross Annex Carpet Replacement hasn't been done since 99. It causes liability, because the carpet's starting to go up. And right now, currently, what building maintenance does is actually tape it back down, but poses a major liability for employees. The City Hall Elevator Smoke Screen, Phase One, is really to ensure that if there's any smoke within the elevator systems, that it remains intact and it doesn't- smoke within the elevator systems, that it remains intact and it doesn't penetrate out into the building. In addition, you will notice that there are other facilities that we've identified, a lot of them dealing with the air handlers and HVAC systems throughout the various facilities that need to be replaced. In terms of additional priorities, again, you know, our building superintendent has identified, obviously Fred has identified asphalt, but also wants to continue replacing the HVAC systems at the Sartek. In terms of the Santa Ana Police Administration, there's a lot of issues related to the fuel tank management system, the air handler system, the central plat circulation pumps need to be replaced, and a lot of issues in terms of the gates, the water heaters, and a lot of the roll-up doors that the police use. In terms of the Santa Ana jail, there's a compressor that operates four walk-in freezers or refrigerators, and that's also beginning to fail. In terms of City Hall, there's been, it's been a while since we replaced the carpet, which causes liability for employees, as well as the Ross Annex, which would be phase two, as well as phase two for the elevator smoke screen.
I want to make sure the council gets some input here. Do we have, how many more presentations do we have?
One more.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we have two presentations after this, not four, two?
Is that correct?
Two.
So, Robert Cortez, Roy Hernandez, Hassan.
We should be done in about ten to twelve minutes, Mayor, and then we have an hour scheduled for council input.
All right, if we're going to go ten, twelve minutes, please continue. I just want to make sure we get input before council members leave.
So, again, we've, here, real quickly, we have identified various facilities, Main Library, Jerome Center, New Hope Library, McFadden Learning Center, El Salvador Center. These are all your outside facilities that need deferred maintenance, that have priorities. And finally, in terms of functionality, again, here, we just highlight the various facilities that need more repairs. Obviously, the train station, which Fred spoke about, the Santa Police Department facility, both the admin also need additional repairs, the corporate yards, Santa Senior Center, Ross Annex, City Hall, and there's other facilities, obviously. The total value of the deferred maintenance for the facilities really is about seven million dollars in total. In terms of our vehicles, currently, we have about six hundred and twelve, not only both vehicles as well as non-vehicle equipment. The total value of our inventory is about eighteen point six million. What we used to determine what vehicles needed to be replaced was age of equipment, mileage, increasing maintenance costs, as well as the safety of the vehicle. Currently, forty-three percent of our vehicle and equipment are over ten years old. Thirty-five vehicles currently have over a hundred thousand miles, and obviously with increasing costs. What we've identified in our presentation is that only ninety-seven vehicles actually that we're looking to replace over the course of the next year. The criteria for replacement obviously are the oldest vehicles with the highest mileage and maintenance costs, level of safety, and departmental need and priority. Just to let you know, annually, you know, there are about five to six vehicles that are totally damaged beyond repair that need replacing. Sixty-four percent of our non-vehicle equipment was purchased in nineteen ninety or the early two thousands. These are our trailers and chippers. And of the ninety-seven vehicles identified for fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, seventy-one over ten years old, and nine PD motorcycles over eight years old. So, in a nutshell, at the end, what we're actually looking for, the first priority is to replace forty-four vehicles, primarily within the Police Department, of which we identify thirty-four. Public Works would be the next major department that we would replace, which at twenty-seven, followed by Parks and Rec at twenty. And that would proceed throughout the course of the various buckets, each one being the next priority that we would do for a total of ninety-seven.
Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead. Councilor Raina, please.
So, Fran, in your department, in your ultimate wish list, that bucket is what, seven million, ten million?
Four.
Bucket one, or two, or three?
Your entire department, your-
All your buckets.
Would be seven, about ten million.
About ten million, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
We have-
It's outrageous, crazy numbers, but we haven't invested into any of our infrastructure over the last ten years.
Longer than that.
I would think that we would have these dollars that, our monies that we haven't had, that we would put at least half of it into our infrastructure, because there's a lot, a lot of serious need here.
Mr. City Manager, please.
Thank you. I looked at the sales tax today, and we haven't had an increase since two thousand. Our numbers are flat, so that's one of the reasons why we haven't made the investments we need to make. With your permission, Mayor, we're going to skip technology due to general plan and open up for council input.
That's fine, but technology is the only one that Councilor Martinez was interested in.
I thought you already heard that at your FedTech.
I already heard it, yeah, but I think Roman stayed on technology.
Okay, so you, then we have-
Go brief, and we'll give you another five minutes.
Okay, this is-
It's my priority, but there's a-
Five minutes, and let's go brief on technology.
Okay, and then we got general plan for a couple minutes.
You got it.
Got it. Robert, brief.
All right, we're going to speed through this. Thank you for the time. So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and council members. Happy to report that we completed our IT assessment within our budget and within our six-month schedule that we had, that we had projected here. The assessment basically reviewed equipment, infrastructure, staffing levels, training needs. It basically took a look at everything that we have in terms of the organizations. The city right now, the way it's structured, it's made up of three separate IT organizations. There's many recommendations in here that you're going to see in a minute, but I do want to take the time to recognize Roy Hernandez from Third Wave, who helped us with this project, as well as Hanni Mustafa from our planning, from our personnel department. The entire IT assessment was presented at FedEd back in July, so they did get to see a lot more detail than what you're going to see today. The overall investment that we're looking at here is approximately nine million dollars over the next five years.
You said nine mil?
Nine million.
Thank you.
Okay, over the night, over the next five years. But this will provide tremendous improvement in terms of IT over the entire organization. So, let me just recap really quick here. Some good observations made by the consultant basically included that we've made significant improvements in investments in technology, which includes enterprise technology, which is our financial systems, purchasing content management system, kind of like Laserfish. It also includes us, they've also identified a strong desire from our staff, including management, our leadership, who's all looking forward to improving our technology. When we move on to now what is being recommended in terms of transformational changes on a go-forward basis, we're looking at potentially changing the structure of IT on a go-forward basis, so we have more of a centralized operation throughout the organization. We're also looking at seeking funding from the City Council in terms of implementing some of these projects, as well as funding some of the staffing levels, because we are very low in terms of IT positions throughout the city. There's also a strong recommendation in terms of increasing our best practices throughout the organization, as well as policies in the IT organization. Additional opportunities include upgrading our existing infrastructure, hardware, and software. Believe it or not, a lot of our technology is anywhere between seven years and fifteen years old, which is completely outdated. Another observation was that the city's not really taking advantage of e-government or online service delivery, which is, should be tremendous help for the city in terms of providing support to our community and the services that we provide. And the last thing was a lack of vision, and this is because we have a decentralized IT organization. The intent is to basically bring all three organizations into one, so we have more of a centralized approach, and we take advantage of adopting emerging technologies. At this point, I do want to call Roy Hernandez to briefly kind of go over the change in organizational structure, some of the recommendations, as well as our IT roadmap on a go-forward basis.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members, pleasure to be here today. I'm going to go through this real quick, okay? Basically, this is the existing situation with the organization. You can see here at the bottom, there's seven major challenges. I'm not going to go through all of them. And generally speaking, a lack of visibility, some redundancies, the inability to take advantage of economies of scale, and according to staff, some confusion as to who supports them. This is what we're proposing. I'm not going to go through this, but suffice to say that there's a number of things, organizational business units, that are going to remain the same, but the items with the asterisk, these are new support units that are, that support innovation, focus heavily on customer service, and internal efficiencies. This is the implementation, what we call the roadmap, over the five years, and you can see how we structured the different initiatives. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these, but suffice to say that we did use a very structured criteria to determine how many projects were done per year over the five years, and we have quite a list of projects.
Can I, I just want to ask a question on the-
Sure.
-online utility billing water usage app. Especially with the water shortage and all that, it's important that people know how much water they're using, because, you know, right now, you get a bill, and then you do stuff, and then a month, or, you know, layering it. It's hard to monitor. If we had an app that told folks how much they're using in closer or real time, it'd be a great thing. If we wanted to prioritize that, what would it look like? How much money, what would it, what would you recommend?
That's already in the plan because the water rates were approved, so that's going to be in there? That's just listed as one of the items for your-
How much does it cost?
This is Fred related to the smart meters and the app?
Is it a half million? Is it five million? Is it-
No, no, it's nowhere near that. Every, every one of these, every one of these line items has been, there's a budget estimate for each one of these line items. I don't happen to recall what it is.
Just later, not right now, get back to the council, tell us how much it is, because if we could prioritize that, it'll be a lot easier to get our residents to save water, because they'll be more aware of what's going on.
We'll do that, Mayor, and give you a schedule.
Thank you.
Along that note, one of the, one of the cornerstones of this IT strategic plan is the focus on e-government, online services, and services to the community. So, things like transparency, open government, online services, all those things are a heavy component of the strategic plan. And so, here's the balance of projects over the next three years. Now, these are some of the benefits, and if you look at the top three, stop time savings, business process improvement, and improved productivity across staff, these are really important benefits that the city can gleam from investing. But if you look at the next two, enhanced customer service and cost savings, those are, again, very significant opportunities for the city to reap the benefits of in investing in new technology. This is a cost-benefit analysis that was done on the entire program over five years, and you can see the cost-benefit curve here, that sometime after year two, in year two or after year two, you begin to get the payback period. And you can see that after years three, the potential savings and cost efficiencies are significant compared to the overall investments in technology.
That's pretty good.
And, and basically, the next steps is to adopt the five-year ITSP implementation roadmap, allocate funding to begin the program over the first year, and begin some of the initial first steps, like recruiting a chief information officer, realigning the department. In fact, yeah, the first bullet is already underway, I'm glad to say. But realigning the organization, the IT organization, to better serve the community and the city, adopting IT governance, which is basically a funding mechanism to vet and approve all new investments in technology, and then proceed with the IT-
And remember, we're going to call them czar, not officer.
Yeah, I know, you mentioned that in the last meeting. Yeah. Anyways, that's, that's it for our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Mayor, just to point out, it's nine million over five years. Some of it's already been funded, and some of it's going to be paid for through water utility and public works.
Excellent.
This is our last presentation.
And this is given to us by Hassan?
That's right.
Two S's, right?
Two S's and two A's.
Thank you. Thank you for the two A's. Earlier, it told me you had one A.
Well, yes. I'm going, I'm not going to go through what a general plan is. I'm assuming everybody in this room has talked about it, so the, as you know, our general plan is old, it needs to be updated. I'm going to go directly to the, to the slide that really matters in terms of money. We actually really need about two million dollars over two years. We don't need a lump sum of two million dollars. The way we're going to do the general plan, as this slide shows, we're going to hire some staff, do it in-house, and then hire consultants for very specialized work, which would not be worth our time and our money to bring in staffmen. And for about a million dollars a year, and this is the breakdown, we can produce the general plan, the first draft of the general plan in two years for council consideration and adoption. About half of it is going to go for staff, half of it is going to go to consultants. This is just a, an overview. We have been already working on identifying the areas that are opportunities for change. These are really the opportunities in the city, which includes the metro east area, as you, if you see on, on the, if we could wait the metro east and not do it as a separate project and do it as part of the general plan, as you can see on First Street, where the whole First Street is part of the corridor that we will be looking very closely at to see if we need to change the policies and the codes on. Then, there was a question, and we were asked to include slides to discuss metro east. The metro east overlay area is already adopted. The idea is to extend that over First Street, close to downtown. If you wanted to pull this out and do it separately, separate from the general plan, we could do it at about a hundred thousand dollars and within twelve to eighteen months, which, by the way, the timing coincides with the general plan. We would do these together, or we could do them together as part of one, separate projects. And that is really it. All I'm asking for is about a million dollars a year for the next two years to update the general plan, and if you'd like to do the metro east, another hundred thousand dollars and add it to our count.
So, one point one million.
That's right.
Great.
Thank you.
Got it.
Thank you. City Manager, we have one more presentation, right?
Come on, Kelly. Minus the one fifty, that's right.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'll be brief. Santa Ana needs a brand. We need it for economic prosperity and civic pride, and we need something that will stand the test of time and provide a clear positioning message. The cost to engage a consultant to embark on this is probably between seventy-five and two hundred thousand. It depends on how robust our community outreach would be, and, you know, if the consultant's local or, you know, located somewhere else in the country, and what, what those travel costs would be. These are some of the things that we would go through in exploring the brand, as far as our position, values, community, authenticity, character, vision, and mission. Really, we want to unite locals, lure travelers, and others who will invest. And so, the next steps are to designate funding, release an RFP and award to contract, then get to work.
That was brief. Councilor Benavides, I know you've been a proponent for years. Any comments?
This is the shortest presentation. So, I think we should award the two hundred thousand that they've been asking for?
All right.
Immediately. And then let the rest fall in place.
Yes.
I think there's something to be said for that, but look, Hidaro, everybody, it's all important. I know Hidaro probably had the longest, but, but thank you for that. Right. Thank you. Ms. City Manager, any conclusions? Should we just bring it back to council?
About ten years' worth of needs in about an hour and twenty minutes, Mayor. Thank you for listening and for your patience. The staff is, that's all the presentations we're going to make. We'll take your direction today, follow up individually with the council members, as you suggested, to get their inputs and priorities, and then we want to hear all your input, of course. And the next meeting would be September fifteenth, when we actually have the amount, and that would be a work study where you could make decisions and give his direction.
Got it. So, with that, given that, who would like to start, and what, Councilor Martinez?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to add some items to the, to the bucket list before, you know, we talk about some of the possible allocations that we do want to make that some of us may have here today. So, I wanted to add, you know, and it was mentioned in public comment, but the civic engagement component, as we move forward and- today. So I wanted to add, you know, and it was mentioned in, in comm, in, in public comment, but the civic engagement component, as we move forward, and I, I do believe that it's important and imperative that we look at that component, and hopefully that it, it will be through the clerk of the council's office, but, you know, we need to institutionalize civic engagement and voter registration within local municipalities today. There is about, at the state level, there's money that's been budgeting that will be going out for grants as well, but many local municipalities are doing it, whether it be Long Beach, Los Angeles, Chicago, I could go on and on, on the list. And so as we move forward and wanting to engage, I think that's something that's important that I wanted to add to the list. The second thing, when it, when you pertain to economic development, and Roman has mentioned, you know, the Santa Ana Day and possibly giving some kind of incentive, and, and I, I think that's a cool concept, but another cool concept is having a tax-free weekend, up to $2,500. The, the city of Boston is doing that right now. They have tax-free weekends for businesses, so you go in there and you're getting, a lot of these businesses are getting a lot of customers, and it's up to a certain limit where you're getting the reduction on, on, on taxes from the city that we're subsidizing, they're certainly not, you know, charging their, their, their consumers. And so I would like for us to look into that as another incentive to incentivize within economic development, choosing maybe two times a year out there on, on a weekend, that we would be able to support that. Again, we want to be business-friendly, and the other thing is, as well, and I know we have, we're doing our economic strategic plan, but it's, and, and I'm going to focus on economic development because it's extremely important, and not too many items, nor did we talk about economic development, but, you know, something, some, someone has to pay for all these services, and it takes economic development. It's going to take branding to move Santa Ana to the next page, and so when we start looking at the amount of fees that we're charging and the regulations that we have, I've been talking to businesses, I just talked to a business owner the other day, he was telling me, like, I, I think I'm going to leave your city. He's like, I, I just can't, I can't continue to afford all the, you know, all the fees that you're charging. I said, well, are you sure they're not the state or federal? Are you sure it's coming from the city? And certainly enough, he showed me, you know, that it is coming from the city. So we need to take a look, you know, and do a, a really cost analysis and assessment of how we're actually, you know, helping our businesses and also penalizing them. You know, you, there's a lot of different fees that, in many respects, they shouldn't have, and so we need to do a better job if we truly want to become business-friendly. We can't have all those fees in place. So those were the three items that I, I wanted to add to the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Benavides. I think you looked like you wanted to speak earlier.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I came into the, into the meeting just pretty encouraged by the fact that we had approximately $12 million that we would be able to allocate, especially after having come through a number of years of, uh, just some tough times and, and a lot of cuts. After seeing all of these, these, the lists of the 10 years of deferred maintenance and all, I, I must admit, I'm, I'm not as encouraged. At $12 million drop in the bucket, more, I'm kind of deflated and just kind of want to walk out with my head hung low.
No, stay here, stay here.
No, but, but, but all that, you know, coming back around, actually, the last presentation, when it comes down to, to the city branding, I think that's one that maybe just presents opportunity, and, and it was good to actually end on a positive note. There is a lot to promote when it comes to our city, and to Councilwoman Martinez's point, when it comes, it comes down to economic development, businesses are doing well, if businesses are doing well, tax revenue is going to come in, and tax revenue is going to be what's going to help us take care of the rest. So making sure that we get the message out there, making sure that we have people locally choosing to shop in the city, folks from outside choosing to come and invest in the city, I, I think is, is a good thing. So I, I'm just, I'm, I'm going to start by just encouraging us to look at, at fully funding that, the city branding strategy that I think will pay, pay dividends over, over the number of years, and, and setting, allocating funds aside at the, the full amount there of 200,000. A couple of other items that, that, well, I'll, I'll mention just in general, when it comes to these one-time funds, looking at tangible ways that we can see improvements, capital improvement projects, and, and something that we can point to. So parks, and, and I know that there's a lot of deferred maintenance, and to your point, Mayor, when you go out there, I take my kids out there, and the swing is hanging, and the slide is off, and, and, but that, those are hopefully things that we, that we can and should be doing on just a go, on an ongoing basis, just the way we do business. It's, it's going out and taking care of these things. To Councilwoman Martinez's point she's mentioned before is, there should be a strategy, a mechanism in place where every year we're setting funds aside. I know right now we sort of try, but it's, it's very minimal, and, and so we need to figure out a strategy so we can, not just the parks, but just in general. But to the point, is, is the idea of investing to see a new park, Parklet, the skate park idea, there's a lot of momentum around the downtown, potentially putting a, a skate park, something simple, something basic, or more, more like a skate, skate plaza potentially along that alley between Spurgeon and, and French, and Fourth and Fifth. It, it's an opportunity that's there that has come up. So would encourage us to look at, at those types of investments. Again, just a place for, for youth, families to gather. I'll, I'll stop there. A couple other ideas, but I'll let other councilmembers speak, and we'll come back around. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go with Mayor Pro Tem, and then Roman Orangio, we'll go to you, and then I'll go last. I'll defer.
Well, you're the chair, man.
I'll go last.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and this will be a conversation, so I guess, you know, we, I don't think this is the last time we get to speak. I think if anything, what we want to do is we want to listen to each other, so. You know, it's funny, because I know when Councilmember Benavides was speaking, he was saying that, you know, we thought this was, you know, a real encouraging, you know, moment for us, we're going to be spending surplus money, something that none of us have done, with the exception of the mayor.
No, no.
So, you know, we haven't seen, we haven't seen a surplus here in our entire tenure, so, but I guess when we, when we look at it, we have to see a glass half-full. So I think what was a little overwhelming and made me mind-numbing was how many, you know, what our needs are. So when you look at the needs, really, in black and white, and they're, they're real numbers, and you're talking about 20 million for one department, 16 million for another, nine for this, so we could aggregate, aggregate it all, and we could probably go through our reserves, our surplus, and our entire budget, and we probably still wouldn't be done. So I guess I want us to come back to reality and realize, we're not the only city that hasn't addressed every single one of their needs, and I think if we gave the chief an opportunity to go up to the podium, he could probably exhaust the whole thing himself, because, you know, a department has many needs as well. So, look, what we have to do is, I think, get our hands wrapped around this and give staff direction, because the last thing I'd like to see is all of us walk out of here and staff still be as confused as they were when we walked in. And I think our task is to maybe not give you complete, clear direction today, but you've given us a lot to digest and a lot to review. So to the extent that we can, that I'm going to try to at least enumerate some, some of the issues that were identified and say, these are things that we're on the right track on. And, you know, I think, again, we'll probably need a little bit more time, and I'm glad we're going to revisit this, so this shouldn't be the last time we do this, but, but I'd like us to also focus in on, again, those things that are going to generate money for us in the future. So they're one-time investments, but they're one-time investments that could render or, 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 you know, give us more results and, and a better return on our investment in the future, so. But one of those things I think that we haven't addressed, and that's real important, I just want to, you know, put in my support for the general plan being completed. So thank you both to the Director of Planning and to our City Manager for condensing it, because I think that could be an overwhelming task, it could take four, five years, but if it's condensed into two, it makes a lot of sense. I think branding is an important investment that we're making in the city, because what it does is it, it presents the improvement of the city's image to people who are going to be potential investors back into the city, and that's going to generate more money for us. I think metro east, even though we, we can wait and just incorporate it into the general plan, I think there's so much activity there, there's so much momentum with the Lion Development, with the development at the Elks property, with the development, you know, just further up the street that we're seeing, there's just a lot of activity. I think it should be done independently, so I would make a pitch for that. South Main is something I think that was, that was touched upon. I know there's some settlement funds that are going to be coming to South Main. I think they'll, they'll be resolving that issue soon, but what they were talking about is just making a more uniform stretch of area there. And as we did with the downtown, we started small. I think there's, there's ways that we can make South Main maybe a version of what downtown is. If they start talking about a P-bid, if they start talking about a bid, it might be a very interesting part of the downtown, where we start seeing investment, where we start seeing some activity. There's a good blend of residential and commercial, so I'm very optimistic about that. I like the idea of, of skate parks. I like the idea of placing them in areas like Memorial, maybe downtown, wherever we can fit them, because they're a condensed space, and they're not, you know, they're, they're not green, they're hardscapes, so I think they're, they're easier to manage and easier to operate than, than something like a park that we're going to have, where that we're going to need a lot more area for. But speaking of parks, if I can make a real strong pitch for just the conversation at Willowick, because I think there's a window of opportunity for something that we could do with 100 acres. And again, we can't do this alone. This isn't a unilateral decision, it's owned by the city of Garden Grove, but we can at least start talking about it, and I think it's, it's a good conversation to have, especially because Garden Grove is, you know, is, is maybe open to a conversation, and I think it's a good one for us to have. It's timely right now. Finally, what I would say is, you know, yeah, we, we went to an unveiling the other day at, at Flower and Sunflower, and there was a, there was an unveiling of public art, and it didn't cost a lot, I think. Gerardo, was it 80,000?
Correct.
80,000. I mean, relatively speaking to the numbers we just saw, 80,000 isn't a significant amount of money. It's a lot, but it's not overwhelming. But what it did, when people were out there, we were celebrating the Japanese farmers who were once there, and, and agriculture, and what, what was the history of that area before it was developed, it really brought a lot of, you know, joy to a lot of folks in the neighborhood, and it's funny how a piece of art will do that. And it wasn't large, and it's not overwhelming, but it was just a very special place. If we did that throughout the city, if we did that in different districts, in different neighborhoods, in different areas, that there are historical footprints that we should recognize, I think it's a real wise way of spending our money, because it enriches us not just, you know, you know, I mean, the traditional ways we spend our money is public safety, infrastructure, and economic development, but there's something to inspiring a community. There's something to making somebody have pride in where they live. So I would say that that's money well-spent, to the extent that we can allocate some money towards that, and I guess that you can consider it placemaking, you can consider it something else, whatever label or term we want to put on it. But I think our city has gone through a very difficult, you know, five, eight years, and so to inspire them, to let them know that we, you know, we were empathetic, we lived through this with them, and that we want to give something back so their community is a better place, I think would be money well-spent. So let's, let's just continue talking, Mr. Mayor. Those are a few of my thoughts.
Thank you. Why don't we go to Councilmember Mescola, and then Councilmember Reyna, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, for me, I think one of the big ones is definitely infrastructure. With the presentation that was given here tonight, I think we can all agree that it's something where I think the majority of the money should be going to, I say at least half. Also, in terms of parks, I think the safety, we really need to look at the safety of our parks. It's, it's a liability issue, so I know Gerardo's requesting $3 million. I think there's, should be a way for us to triage so that we can see which ones are the ones that we need to hit first and prioritize those, and for me, I think that's, that's a big one also. As far as the Santiago Creek, because that was one of mine, I know that's been a contentious issue for a long time that we haven't tackled here in the city, because it's a contentious issue, and I don't think the city's going to agree, you know, let's build a trail there or, but I think it's important to have a feasibility study, just so we can have options, and maybe we can come up and, come up with a way where maybe we can close it down at certain hours of the day, it doesn't have to be open all the time, and maybe work with the neighborhood there to see, definitely get their input, whoever's going to be affected. Another one is definitely the joint use agreement with Santa Ana Unified School District. I think we serve the same community. I think it's a time right now where the council and the school district has been working together, and there's momentum in that, and I can see a lot of potential in continuing these joint use agreements with the school district. So those are my main priorities that I want to mention.
Thank you. Councilmember Reyna, please.
Sure, absolutely. I share a different feel. I, I am truly excited, probably because I haven't experienced the last 10 years of budget cuts. And, and the numbers you could see, it's 58,000.7 million dollars that, that are needed to bring our facilities just up to par, not necessarily.
You're doing okay, keep going.
Not necessarily to enhance them, just literally just bring it up to par. So I mean, that's an overwhelming number out there, and, but the fact that we actually get to invest in our infrastructure or our programs, something that we haven't done in a couple of decades, to me is exciting as heck, you know? How do, we're going to divvy it all up is obviously a concern. Because we haven't had the opportunity to invest in, in our own infrastructure for so many years, I, I too agree that, that half of our dollars really should be dedicated for our, our infrastructure, and the other half, as we look for other activities. As we move forward on that, I, I'm definitely going to piggyback on, on Councilwoman Martinez's comment with the civic engagement. I think that really is a, a key component. I, I think that one of the components that should follow under there is some type of volunteer program. We have a lot of residents that have great gifts and great experiences, and, and want to invest in sweat equity, and, and roll up their sleeves and help us out. I know when you first came in, City Manager, you had talked about a volunteer program. I think it needs to be a dedicated staff that, that focuses on that, and to utilize that, and I think would reap a lot of benefits in doing so. As we talk about reaping benefits, I, I think we have an opportunity to do something that our city's never done before, and that's create a universal joint use agreement, where we would have a partnership, a true partnership with the district, and through that partnership, we would have a presence in every component of our city, and, except for the other side of the riverbed, sorry, but for the most part, we would have a presence within our city. And the reason that this is key and critical is because we've never done anything like this before. 72% of high school dropouts are unemployed. Nearly 80% of incarcerated juveniles do not have a high school diploma. We spend nearly $2 million annually just on graffiti alone. If we could be proactive, if we could stop this at the source, we could save a heck of a lot more money, and it would benefit us for years and generations to come. I encourage this council to really look at, at a city, city council, school board, joint use agreement that would live beyond us, because this is really a game changer. When I graduated high school in 1988, there was, there was roughly a 50% graduation rate. When I left the school district, the numbers that I saw were a little bit higher than that, but I didn't realize that the formula was a little bit different. I thought that there was no gray line. You either graduated or you did not graduate. You dropped out, didn't get a high school diploma. There's something called non-grads. Non-grad is an individual, you need two things to graduate high school, so many units, and to pass the, the, the exit exam. And if you only have one and not the other, you are considered a non-grad. So technically, you don't drop out, but you do not have a high school diploma. That puts these students in the exact same situation. Makes me think that those numbers are still at 50%. These are the individuals that are creating crime in our community, these are the individuals that are graffitiing, these are the individuals that are being incarcerated, and if we could be proactive with the game changer of this, these two entities working together, I think it would be phenomenal for our, our community. I literally think this would be a legacy, something that we can hang on our hats. San Diego is doing something at Sweetwater, Los Angeles is doing something with Project Learn, Long Beach is doing something with the city and the school district as well. There are examples and examples and examples up and down the state of newer ideas and newer philosophies of doing more with less, and these are the two biggest entities within our city that need, desperately need to have a stronger relationship. I think that's the direction that I want to go, and I encourage my colleagues to do the same. Like I mentioned, 72% dropout that are unemployed, 80% of nearly incarcerated youth are, are without a high school diploma. Those numbers are staggering. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to...
Mayor, I'm sorry, if I can just add one more.
Go ahead.
I forgot to, one more item. The homeless shelter, I think we were looking at a shelter over by McFadden, your ward, right?
Normandy.
Normandy. And I know I voted against that because it was so close to an elementary school, but I do think that that's one thing we need to continue to pursue. I'm not sure what the dollar figure would be, I imagine a lot, but I, I don't want to wait for the county to come and give, help, you know, with a solution. It's going to be a long time. I think we should continue looking at locations and industrial zones. I, I don't want to leave it off the table.
I think the mayor wants to propose the old bus station, right? No, maybe not. Sorry.
So if we can add...
It's okay, I joke around, it's okay.[1732.21]
If we can add that to the list.
And if there's anyone interested in getting these numbers from National Education Association is where you can find some of those numbers. I'm just not pulling it out of the air. Thank you.
I thought that's where you were pulling them out because you were going so fast. I said, man, he's making this stuff up, it sounds good. No, thank you. No, no. Look, I have a lot of thoughts, but let me try to organize them so that, you know, staff and the rest of us can maybe, you know, try to figure out where we go because there's just so much stuff. It's like trying to put your arms around a beanbag. You squeeze it and something else pops up and then you can get a little bit frustrated. One concept I would put out is that we look for things that have a big return on investment and that may don't cost a lot of money. And let me use, you know, the branding as one concept. You know, whether we go fifty thousand or two hundred, it's not really a big number, but if it goes well, it can bring a big return to the city in my opinion. And so in general, we ought to look around and see where can we leverage investments? You know, over at Cabrillo, you know, we already have on the two tennis courts, we already have a lot of the infrastructure when we did the first one. We come in, we do the other two, we're leveraging a previous investment, you know, to really maximize what we're doing. And as we're talking about things like the branding, I think we ought to continue to dream about things like One Broadway Plaza. And I'd like for staff to come back to us as a council and tell us, look, you know, here's some options and then we can choose what those options are. I don't think it's any money out of pocket. I think we might be able to do it by reinvesting future taxes that are going to be developed. And imagine what a thirty-seven story tower, you know, with good paying jobs in the midtown area would do for, you know, for the image, would do for jobs, would do for opportunity, et cetera. So, you know, let's, you know, continue to push, you know, those dreams. I also think we should continue to dream big. And what I mean by that is, look, right now, I say let's all go to the city manager, like on the block grants, and say, out of what we saw, you know, here's my input. Because he's going to have to take that and say, okay, here's what collectively you guys said. But let's not stop there. Let's push him and the staff to come back and to say, look, you know, your bonding capacity is such and such. If you want another, you know, ten million or twenty million or whatever the dollar figure is, here's another approach you could take. And we shouldn't limit ourselves. We should explore what the different options are, push staff to come back and tell us what we can do there. And, you know, let's get creative and think beyond the immediate. What do I mean by that? City streets. You know, a few years ago when we did the hundred million dollars and we fixed a lot of streets here and down, I know we've had some problems, but overall, streets in the city are so much better and what that's done for morale, for, you know, for property values, for, you know, neighborhoods, it's been tremendous. But remember, there are a few areas that we left out. You know, industrial streets in certain parts of the city are in a terrible condition. There are other streets where we had, you know, cement or concrete instead of asphalt. We didn't touch those at all. I suggest we go back to those neighborhood associations, see what we can do and try to look a little bit beyond the box. With Measure M2 and OCTA, our turnbacks are going to increase is what I believe. And if they do, we can take some of that revenue and say, we're going to put it against debt service on a bond. It might be a great time on top of all this other stuff to say, we're also going to take care of and fix additional streets within the city that we didn't really talk about here, but it's a reality for many of our residents and many of our businesses. And you want to talk about a better brand, a better image, you know, if you've got potholes outside your house or your business or cracked concrete, you know, that's what you live with and see every day. So I would like to, you know, have the city manager come back and give us some options in that direction. I also want to see, because I know we talked about it during the budget, something that relates to the deputy city manager position. Bring it back, give us some options. I don't know if that means that we, you know, direct staff to just go out and get a recruitment, you know, firm and we have to make an adjustment in the budget, but I think this is a large city. We currently are, I think, in a deficit as it comes to that function. And again, things that don't cost a lot of money, but potentially can yield a lot of results, I think that falls into that category. Also, I agree with Councilmember Reyna as he talks about, you know, how do we leverage dollars and invest in youth? And an area where I think we can do more, and I'm not so much talking about more money, but bring them in as partners, the Nicholas Academic Centers. You know, right now, they're like, you know, basically in two high schools. But I've been talking to Randy Barth, he's ready to come in with more overhead. Been talking with Henry Nicholas, he's ready to come in and augment things. And also the Unified School District. They're right now willing to potentially put additional overhead money so we could have the Nicholas Academic Center in all the high schools in San Ana. And if you've been to those graduations, and I know some of you guys have, it's a beautiful thing to see. And we're talking about changing lives here, we're talking about making improvements. As we lever and we say, you know, how can the city work with the school? Let's bring in the nonprofits, you know, Think Together, you know, the Ron Simon Institute, Nicholas Academic Center. We have the partnerships out there. You know, the great work that you're doing right now, Councilmember Benavides, as Executive Director, you know what I'm talking about. If we can lever these resources, we'll impact the community in a much bigger way. And so let's do that. And talking about small dollars, look, the trip to Catalina is not a lot of money, but it impacts lives. So, you know, maybe, I don't know what the number is, I know staff said, look, until you give us a number, we don't know if you're talking about fifty students or a thousand.
Sixty-one thousand.
So how many does that impact?
Fifty-five. Sixty-five youngsters.
I'd like to increase that number because I think in terms of, again, I'm thinking, you know, dollars and benefit, there's a good, good ratio there. And that's something that we ought to try to look at, you know, what's the potential upside? Also on technology, and that's something Councilmember Martinez is, you know, very active in, there's a payback on that. We ought to try to accelerate some of those investments because if you look at the curve, I mean, Mayor Protem kept telling me, boy, look at that return. You know, in less than two years, we're starting to get more money back than what we put into it. So, you know, as a business decision, we would be prudent to accelerate that curve and say, let's start bringing these efficiencies and technology into the city. And then, and look, I've got more, but I want to let Councilmember Martinez, because I know she said she didn't, you didn't go down your list or something, right?
Yeah, I didn't go down.
So I thought she went down her list, but that was...
I just added three items.
That was a preamble. That was the preamble.
That was the shortest I ever read.
That was the shortest speech I ever saw her give. So we'll go back to her in a moment, but let me just say that there's a project that I want us to embrace and I know that we're going to have the, unfortunately, Councilmember Benavides took off and this impacts him, maybe he'll come back, I don't know where he went. He what?
He's coming back, just go ahead and get...
His glasses are there? All right, well, look, help me out and let's explain to him when he comes back, but, and this is for you as well, Councilmember Reyna, just when you guys are done, I just want to mention something.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no. Look, I mentioned earlier, things that are good that don't necessarily cost a lot that we can do. I know you were very instrumental in pushing the 5K and now that's kind of going. Well, guess what? We can get a half marathon coming here to San Ana as part of the Orange County Marathon and it doesn't have to cost us money. Why not? Because the marathon right now starts in Newport Beach, goes through a line, comes to San Ana and back to the fairgrounds. We could do a half marathon from the civic center going down towards the Bristol Ettinger around modern day area where it's not far from connecting with the big marathon that comes. So for about five miles, and we can raise the money from local sponsors, about four thousand dollars a mile, we can have a half marathon here in the city by joining that marathon. I met today with some of the folks from the marathon, they're willing to do it, talk about, you know, branding, talk about introducing, you know, folks from the outside to the city. We have a lot of things like the Science Center, like the High School of the Arts, like Bowers, or, you know, regional benefits that give people a better impression of San Ana. If we can do something like a half marathon that joins with the other half marathon, because they have another half marathon that starts from the coast and ends at the, you know, down at the fairgrounds, just imagine it, having employees here from City Hall, you know, having judges running, having, you know, a lot of our high schools and a lot of our students that are on track teams that want to participate. It can become a big deal and again, a lot of bang, you know, for the buck. So with that, Councilmember Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll be very brief. First off, I just want to say that I'm supportive of every item Mayor Protem Sarmiento mentioned in his comments, so I won't go after that and speak further on that. Hold a moment, Mr. Mayor, but I did want to go down some of the items that were presented by our staff and wanting to say that I'm wholeheartedly supportive of the senior center. We made a commitment two plus years ago and I know there was money raised from our city employees to fulfill that obligation, which was a community garden and some iron fence and to boot, you know, if you look at the two community centers that we have in the city, senior centers, they're in total disrepair and so I think that that needs to be a priority. We have over nine thousand seniors in our city. You know, yes, we have a lot of youth in our city, but we need to make sure that there's a balanced approach and that we do take care of our seniors as well. So I wanted to make mention that the technology, definitely supportive of the five-year plan and just want to thank our staff for moving us along in that direction. Of course, the San Ana Safety Mobility Plan, if we need to go with the basic to start off, I think that's a good approach. As you all know, most of the fatalities, most of the deaths that we've had in the city thus far have been from pedestrian and bicycle deaths. You know, I know we're over fifteen already, you know, I've asked for the number, our staff still hasn't given us that entire number, but, you know, just last month alone, there was four fatalities. And so if I could please get that full-on number of fatalities from pedestrians and also cyclists for this year alone, it'd be greatly appreciated, but I'm definitely supportive of the San Ana Safety Mobility Plan. Of course, the infrastructure, you know, definitely a huge need, but we have to remember that these are one-time monies. When you're dealing with capital and deferred maintenance, this is ongoing cost. What we don't want to do is kid ourselves. We got to have vision, we have to have, we have to set policy here and we need to set a ten percent capital deferred maintenance reserve plan in place, just like we did for our reserves to get at the twenty percent. We need to do ten percent and making sure that we get to that and then that we could have reoccurring money every year to fix all these issues. And we're not going to do it with one-time money, so I need to encourage my colleagues to make that a priority and really move forward with that. If we want to give one-time money for certain projects within of safety, that's great, but consider moving forward, that money may not be there next year. And so that's why we need this capital deferred maintenance plan in place. I'm certainly supportive of the GIS and the asset management, definitely needed. I'm also supportive of the Calle Cuatlo and the Wellness Corridor. We made commitments to assuring that we would be supportive of that and so I want to make sure that we move forward with that as well. You know, having a homeless strategy, when we talk about economic development, we're talking about everything else, we have a problem and we cannot count on the county to solve this problem. It is in our backyard and we need to make a commitment to assuring that we address this problem and there needs to be a strategy and it needs to be a top priority. Thirdly, you know, I also think the transportation, I continue to talk about transportation and I seem to be the only one besides our staff, but at the end of the day, as we look at SARTIC, the San Ana Regional Transportation Center, and as the streetcar comes onboard, we're going to need to be a multimodal city. If you look at the city of Seattle, it's the fastest growing city in America and the amount of multimodal that they've been able to put in, the infrastructure is quite amazing. We just can't think small about parking structures and how revenue we're going to receive. That's small potatoes. We got to have a bigger vision and it has to be in place. So I'm encouraging my colleagues to support one SARTIC, that is definitely a huge need and moving into multimodal. The other thing that we didn't talk about that we had allocated money for was the zoning. Our zoning documents is sixty years old, not even, you know, you look at, our general plan is forty years old, zoning is sixty. And so that needs to be addressed as well. We're talking about being business friendly. We're not being business friendly when we have outdated plans, forty and sixty years old. We're way behind the curve and we're the ones that are causing problems for developers and businesses here in the city. And that needs to be addressed now and it needs to be a top priority if we really mean that we want to be a business-friendly city. These plans need to be taken care of. And finally, you know, I am supportive of assuring if we're going to get a deputy city manager and we need to hire someone and we need to pay them more money, you know, bring that to the table, Mr. City Manager, whatever that's going to be, and have that conversation with us. Certainly, as a mayor mentioned about One Broadway, again, I am supportive of economic development and so whatever resources that we can bring to businesses, I'm willing to take a look at it to assuring that we're able to be a friendly business, you know, city. And we keep on saying that we want to be, but we're not going to get there until we provide the opportunities. And I just want to end, of course, I'm supportive of joint use, have always have been supportive of joint use since I've been on this council. And the last thing that I want to mention that we haven't discussed, that I have discussed in FedTech for a long time and I've discussed with all of you many times, is the unfunded liability. When you're talking about CalPERS and you think things are going well, let me tell you, things are not going well. They just lost their shirt in the stock market. And if you are not paying attention and we all think that the state of California is doing great, that we're doing great with our pensions, that, you know, there hasn't been an inflight, let me tell you, we are going to find ourselves in trouble. We can't hire enough people, we have people retiring and who's going to be paying for these pensions when these people retire? We got to be, we got to be in reality, we got to be visionary, we have to understand the dynamics and what is going on here and how we're going to be sustainable. And I am very passionate about this issue because if we want to be a sustainable city, we cannot spend money we do not have, ladies and gentlemen. We cannot continue to be a city like that. That's what put us in the position we were in three, four years ago. And so I just want to keep that, want my colleagues to keep that in mind and realize that, yes, if we put a cert five hundred, and our city manager recommended it, putting five hundred thousand dollars to draw down on our fund, yeah, that's not sexy. Oh, well, it's not going to give us, you know what, in the long run, it's going to give you the best return on investment that you could ever think of. And we need to continue to assure that we're moving in that direction. If we don't, because some of us are leaving in 2018 or some of us are going to other offices or whatever have you, let me tell you, our job and our objective when we got onto this city council was to assure that we left this city council, this city a better place. And the way to do it is to make sure that it is sustainable. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're going to probably go around another couple of times, but just for, you know, one of the things I forgot to mention for clarity, I want to thank the staff, number one, which I forgot to do because it's a lot of work for all of you to gather this information for us. I think, you know, sometimes it's, you know, it's so much information, it's so dense that it's hard to see it, but I know it takes a lot of work, so I want to thank everybody, all the departments that were able to present to us. And we want to thank you as well because the reason why we're in this position and we're taking the time is because, you know, we haven't done it. And maybe we're good, we've been good at being frugal and being careful with our money and cutting costs and maybe not as good at spending money, so maybe we'll get better. But what I do want to make sure we don't forget is that I know we mentioned body cameras early on. And so I want to make sure that to the extent that there's grant funding available, and I think the city always competes well for that funding, we still, I think, should try to allocate some funds for that. What I'd like to ask those staff, and maybe Mr. City Manager, maybe you can help me on this, I know that we're talking about, a lot of us are talking about costs that are ongoing, going-forward costs and they're more policy decisions. I guess the way I saw this retreat was almost in a bifurcated way where we were going to talk about how we expend that surplus figure, which is somewhere between ten and twelve million. And then the other part of the discussion was going to be, what sort of guidance can we give staff on things that we see maybe twelve, twenty-four months, maybe five years down the road? So I guess I saw this opportunity as a way to tackle both. I guess we could merge the two and say, let's use some of that surplus money as seed money for an ongoing cost. You know, for example, if we did something on branding, we're going to spend some money on branding, but it's going to be an ongoing cost because we want to continue doing, improving that and it's not just something that you spend at one time. You know, let's just say, for example, skate park, same thing, you build a skate park with one-time monies, but you maintain them and you have costs that are operational and ongoing. So I guess is that, what would be best for staff? What's, I guess, most instructive for staff and helpful?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Mayor, city council members. This is all great discussion, wonderful. We're mixing policies and deputy and things that we should have done in the base budget, but that's all good information. Historically, most cities don't have a surplus. In fact, I never had one in Phoenix the whole time I was there in twenty-six years. I'm going to be very honest with you, everybody knows how to spend every single penny and the mayor knows this, but a good budgeting, you don't have a surplus. The reason we have a surplus now is because the turnaround was so fast and so quick and so astonishing that we actually did better than we ever imagined, so that's why we're here today. If we had thought we were going to have this money, we would have spent it two years ago. It would, so surplus discussions are, and I guarantee you, we're never going to have another surplus like this again.
Right.
So I'm just going to tell you that right now. So all the comments are really good. If we do replacement, one-time money, that's easy, those are good investments, we need the vehicles, the parks, all the things we're talking about. One-time money for branding is one-time money. If we need to have a continuation program or refresh the brand, whatever, goes into the... the base budget, so as a city manager, I'm listening to everybody, everything that's being said here, some of the things are gonna be done in January or February, because we gotta get our credit rating, Mayor, before we come out with the streets program and, and those things, because that'll tell us our sensitivity analysis and how much money we have. But in theory, um, if we have, uh, capital improvements now, then we budget in our base budget, that money, right away, without even going to the council, becomes part of our base budget, and that's the starting point for next year's budget. So we can't not a budget for, for the ongoing expenses, and if that staffing, or maintenance, or what have you, uh, we do have this money available, it's one-time, it's, it's very substantial compared to our budget, uh, it's almost, uh, 5% of our budget, so this is a lot of money, uh, and what the hope is that we invest it wisely, we return on investment. So everything we're hearing, Mayor Protem, is, is good stuff, and, uh, some of the stuff, I will come back and say, this is a, a budget discussion for next year, it's a policy decision, anytime you want to take it. But we're getting great feedback today on, on the priorities that you have for the $10 million. I also want to emphasize, again, uh, maybe people don't believe me, but that's okay, I really believe that we have great opportunities, both for CDBG funds and through our investment, our, our debt service, uh, I've been analyzing it very, uh, very, um, much lately, is 5% of our budget. Our pension costs are 11, that's only 16%. Uh, there are a lot of cities that have a pension and debt service 35, 40, 45%. Where I came from, it was twice as much as the general fund budget, $7 billion, uh, in, 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 uh, in debt, so we're, we have great opportunities here, if we all work together to finance everything on this table.
And you know, one of the things that we spoke about in committee, I know, was using those monies in reserve, and maybe borrowing on that, and, you know, if we're borrowing from our, from our own funds, I mean, you know, we, we don't, we use those monies wisely. The reason why we have a reserve fund was because this council decided to enact that and adopt that as a policy back when things were very, very critical. And so I want to thank my colleagues, I want to applaud them, those that were with us four or five years ago, because it wasn't an easy decision to say, let's, in a moment of real, real pain, let's tighten our belts even more and make sure that there's a reserve. So the reason why we have 40, 45 million dollars put away was because we were very disciplined, I think, and we were very thoughtful about not putting councils that follow us in a bad place. So I think that's something that I, um, I'm, I'm very, very proud of. Um, a couple of things, something that was mentioned that, um, it did escape me as well, was the homeless, um, issue, and I know that that is something that the county is looking at revisiting, and I think they're realizing that it is a problem, and it only took them 20 or 30 years to realize that, but, um, I'm glad they're coming around. Nonetheless, I agree with the councilwoman that, um, it's a JPA, but it's something that's right in our city, it's right across from City Hall, it's right on City Hall. Um, so we need to come up with a humane, um, intelligent way to deal with it. I think that there are many options, I hope our, you know, friends at, uh, different county agencies work with us, because we certainly want to help that problem, and it's, it, um, you know, when people come and visit our City Hall, and, and, and come for services and resources, the first thing they see is a community that's being neglected, and that's a horrible thing to say. We can brand all we want, till we're blue in the face, but if somebody comes to a counter, and they see a family that's living outside, that doesn't speak well of our city. And so to the extent that we can address that, I, uh, it's a difficult problem, we're never gonna find a perfect solution, but let's find a solution that I think is something that, um, we can all try to embrace, and, um, and I think that's one way to brand our city in a positive way. Um, the second thing is on joint use. I remember, Heraldo, when, uh, Councilwoman Martinez, myself, and Councilman Tinajero were on the, um, Parks and Recs Committee, we did a lot of joint use, and the reason why we did a lot of joint use is because we did have a good relationship with the, with the, uh, school board, and we still do, and it's something I think that we've had for a long time, ever since we've been on this council. Um, I think, though, we want to be careful that we don't, and the reason why we always treaded lightly on that is that we don't want to get into agreements with others that we, that don't share or shoulder the burden equally. So we want to make sure that whatever we enter, whatever agreements that we, uh, make with any agency, whether it's this, uh, college district, whether it's the school district, whether it's any other agency, whether it's the county, everybody shares and pulls their weight, because I'd hate to subsidize uses for other agencies that are now doing very well. So my responsibility is to take care of the public's money for the city, and I want to make sure that we do that wisely, we make sure that we protect our interests, just as they're gonna advocate for theirs. And that's why we, it was a great thing to do joint use agreements campus by campus, because when we did, we really dug down into those agreements and said, you know, are, you know, is, does this make sense? Are we paying for the coverage equally, for the maintenance equally, for the operational costs going forward equally? And it was a shared responsibility, so I just want to make sure that, just as nobody subsidizes us, I don't want to subsidize anybody else. So I just want to make sure we, we enter into that wisely, and so I'll look to our city attorney and her staff to make sure that if we do something, maybe we can have a universal template that we can use, but maybe not, uh, maybe not, uh, do, uh, uh, all campuses. I'd like to look at Willowwick, because think about public, uh, open space, 100 acres of open space, you think that would help our kids? That would do incredible things for our kids, that would be a great park, that would be like New York Central Park in proportion to the size of the city. So that's something that I'd like us to see that, you know, um, inquire into, because again, that, there's very little open space left, maybe that's one option that we could look at as well.
Any, uh, comments from that side of the table? Councilman Benavides?
I agree completely, if we enter any joint use agreements, we all have to put in our fair share, absolutely.
Thank you. Councilwoman Benavides?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. A number of, of the items that I wanted us to, that I wanted to bring to the table or to, to stress have already been mentioned, but I'll go ahead and, uh, and, and go over a few of them, just so that, uh, demonstrate support.
Make sure you talk about the branding.
Uh, you know what, that, that's, that's what I wanted to start with, because, and, and with, no, I think there's a lot of opportunity there, but a number of us have already touched on that. When it comes to the body cameras, uh, you know, that, that's been, uh, an issue that has been discussed, it's been a, a very good thing, uh, I tried the Public Safety Committee, and, uh, there's been a lot of positive feedback as, uh, the discussion has been going out to different community meetings, stakeholder meetings, um, and also, uh, the officers themselves. Uh, uh, there's a committee within, uh, the, the police department here of officers at different, uh, within different, uh, teams that have also been engaging in the conversation. So there's an op, there's a need, an opportunity, I think protects both the officers, our community. Uh, grant monies are great, and as to, to Mayor Protem's point, we, we tend to, um, to do well, we have good staff that, that know how to tell their story well when it comes to those grants. However, uh, I, I think it would be prudent for us to go ahead and set some of these one-time monies aside, and not necessarily be completely dependent on the grant. However, if the grants do come through, then we could turn around and reallocate those funds, not, not let them just go away, but come back to, to other opportunities where we can invest. Um, I, I do agree that we do have a, a unique opportunity when it comes to the joint use, uh, possibilities there. Uh, one of the things that we have been struggling with as a city for a long time is, is the fact that we, uh, unfortunately, are a park, park poor city, we're, we're very dense as a city, uh, we have very limited open space, uh, so engaging in the conversation with the school district, um, and looking at, at how we can, uh, expand. Right now, it's, it's sort of piecemeal, but looking at, at, uh, ways that we can expand and, and open up some of those, those, those green spaces in schools, uh, after 3 o'clock to become, uh, basically pseudo-parks in the afternoons and evenings, I think would be, would be a great thing. Along the lines, again, of, of open space, I, I would agree that, uh, looking at 100, uh, 100 acres of consolidated, uh, area and space, uh, over at, uh, east part of town, at Willowwick, would be, uh, a significant, uh, addition, uh, to the city, and has tremendous of, uh, opportunity and options there. Uh, when it comes to economic development, a few of us have mentioned that, uh, the idea of, of being a business-friendly city, I think we, I think we genuinely want to do that, it's a recurring theme, but, but the practical, uh, tools, the, where we can demonstrate and point to, these are the, the, uh, the, uh, mechanisms by which we are demonstrating this, I, I think that's where we need to kind of fill in the gap, and, and looking at ways that we can see ourselves as partners, not only see ourselves as partners, but generally look at funding opportunities, um, looking at, at whether it be returning some of those funds, and other cities have done this, uh, when you're looking at, at a new project to be developed, hotel bed tax, for example, bring that back, reinvest in that back in, or property tax revenue, reinvest in those projects in, whether it be, uh, One Broadway, whether it be a, a hotel in the downtown or another part of the city, uh, just looking at, there's, the, the economy is swinging, uh, back in a healthy position, but the economy always, i- it ebbs and flows, and, and let's, let's not miss out on this window that we have, uh, to see growth, to see expansion, to see investment in our city, uh, to see the cranes in the, in the, in the ground and, and things moving. I remember going, being at Phoenix not too long ago, not a few years ago, and, and seeing just the, the, uh, the construction, uh, taking place there, and going to other cities, Portland at one point, Chicago at one point, for, I remember for, not a little, a couple years back, and, and seeing the, the investment was a great thing, and, and I'd love to be able to see that in Santa Ana, there's no reason why it shouldn't be here as well. Another, a couple of the practical things, the senior centers, I, I do agree that, uh, we need to make sure to, to reinvest and, and, uh, do, do right by our seniors. So I do appreciate, uh, the, the comments that were presented previously on that. Uh, the, the challenging issue with the homeless as well, uh, we need to do something, frankly, we're, we're, uh, things are, we're, we're losing our, our grip on things out there right now, um, and we really need to pull county in, and, and as a city, we need to, uh, uh, come up with, with some, uh, be committed to coming up with some solutions. Uh, if we don't do it now, it's, it's only going to, to get more, more of a challenge down the road. Uh, SARTIC, uh, you know, and, uh, seeing, looking at what we can do to improve out there as well, and, and, uh, the, the, some of the signage around the Wellness District and, uh, Calle Cuatro as well, we talked about that, we committed to it, we need to follow through on it. Uh, so those are, those are a few of the, uh, the things, and I do want to echo what, what some of my colleagues have mentioned, uh, with regard to staff, and, and it's a very comprehensive report, I, I do appreciate that, uh, time dedication, the hard work that staff has, has put into this, uh, and it's, it's something that will, will, uh, be a tool for us beyond right now, 10, 12 million dollars is not a whole lot, uh, but we're able to, to, to do something, but I do think that it's a tool that we'll be able to do, use to be able to come back and really tackle, uh, these things, and, and be able to bring our, our city and infrastructure to where, uh, it needs to be and should be. So I'll end with that, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So we're in, uh, concluding mode, any, any comments?
Just last comment with, uh, with the joint use, uh, I think I saw the screen, we're at seven, the school district has 64 facilities. We're coming up a little short, we're moving in the right direction, but we are coming up a little short, so I'm just a little concerned with projects or project activities. When I served on the, on the board with the, the school board, um, this really wasn't a top priority, and, and so I'm concerned about the leadership on both entities, now is an opportunity, because if this leadership changes in the next election cycle, we may never have this conversation again. And in how many years, I'm not sure, that we got seven, we have an opportunity right now to utilize all 64 facilities, classrooms, libraries, sports facilities, and that's freaking phenomenal, and you talk about increasing the, the graduation rate, you can have mentoring programs, you can have ESL classes, you can have entrepreneurship trainings, there's so much that we can actually change the cycle that our families are in by utilizing 64 facilities. And again, the time is now, because if the leadership on either one of these committees change, we may never be here again.
Uh, just a question for you on that, Roman, how can we accelerate it?
Well, I think, uh...
Wait, let me, let me...
So we're, we're, we're starting the conversation, and we're having that conversation, I think if, if this council, this body believes that this should be a priority, we direct staff to have these conversations, and to make this more of, of a priority, uh, that will move us in the right direction. Right now, they, they have the conversations, but there are really no direction from this body, and that this is a priority.
Might it be possible to put things into categories, category A, B, or C, depending on the nature of the school? And if you do something, you put the schools in categories, you do something for that school, now maybe there's five or six that have a, a similar profile that we could emulate, and maybe use that to not do every single one from start to finish, but maybe in groups?
Well, I guess my, my, my hope is if, if we can come up with some universal language that would encompass all of these facilities, we're not gonna do them tomorrow, a- and, as we continue to move on, each school will have its own agreement in a sense, because they have their own needs, their own challenges, and their own resources available to them, so it's a little bit different across the board, but if we get this language embedded in, in, in this process, then it will live beyond us, it will live beyond this body, it will live beyond this group.
Well, what I'd like to do is try to accelerate it, and we think it's really good, try to accelerate it.
And I'm all for that, I just want to make sure that, that we don't go too fast.
But understand their ongoing costs, and we, we gotta make sure we handle a goal thing.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm just concerned that we don't go too fast where...
But you were, a moment ago, you were pushing acceleration.
Let's move forward, absolutely, absolutely, let's have the conversation, let's give direction to our city, to our city manager, to have these conversations, and, and to put this as a priority, because as of now, it's not there.
All right, we're starting to wrap, let's do the final wrap.
I do want to add to the joint use, um, the facilities part of it. Right now, classrooms are being used in every school for the after-school program, and I, and they're done at 6 o'clock, I believe. So from 6 to 9, you know, even using those same classrooms, because I know there's a lot of resistance from teachers, uh, allowing people to come in and use the classrooms, there's ways around it, we were, been talking about, you know, maybe even giving stipend, uh, we, of course, we would work with a school district on, you know, how we can, you know, give incentives to teachers to let us use their classrooms, and, you know, at the end of the day, the district can work with us on that. But there are classrooms being used right now from 6 to 9, you know, we're thinking those are hours that we could, that would be a starting point.
We can include adults in the class.
Yeah, adults.
All right.
The citizenship that Mr. Alfredo Mesqua came up to speak about, I mean, the possibilities are limitless.
All right, look, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna thank everybody, I think we've all had good input, spoken our mind here, uh, you know, obviously thank all of staff, I think a lot of folks, you know, Heraldo, Fred, others, uh, uh, you know, Hassan with two S's, uh, a whole lot of folks, and two As too, a whole lot of folks, uh, you know, put a lot of work into this. Look, I know we could come up with more money to spend if we were to ask Carlos, you know, could you spend more money in PD? He could wipe up that surplus fairly quickly and put it to good use. So, you know, our job is to try to, you know, stretch these dollars, do what we can, push our city manager, our staff to come back with alternatives in the near future, you know, meanwhile, you know, mechanisms, like were mentioned by several council members, give us options on things like One Broadway, so if we choose to take care of this window, and, and, and take advantage of this window, and by the way, I don't think these good times go on forever, things ebb and flow, Councilwoman Martinez is making some good arguments, saying, you know, we've got a certain period of time right now, and on some of these things, if we want to move, let's strike while the iron is hot. So, so look, I, I just suggest, in terms of the immediate, because I think Mayor Protem made a good point, saying, look, we've got some money now that we know for sure, I, I suggest initially we focus on that, individually, go as council members, give priorities, and then let the city manager try to balance it out and come back to us and say, you know, based on everything I got, you know, here's what I think is, is, is reasonable, and then hopefully in, you know, January or February, at some point, you can come back and say,